Twenty-fourth meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township. If you would all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
This is by the United States of America, into your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will note that prior to the meeting today, we met at 5:30 in Executive Session to discuss issues related to real estate, personnel, and legal matters. With that notice, I will move us forward to public participation.
Commissioner Larkin, before we— I guess we still don't have our monitors—I didn't hear—but are the monitors working? Mine's not working, right?
Good evening, Sarah Pilling with my Ready for 100 hat on. I don't know whether we can get the video, but I wanted to let you and anyone who's listening and anyone who's here to know that there's a Renewable Energy and Environmental Expo on Saturday, March the 7th, from 11 to 2 at the Kreck in Havaford Township. Mike Zabel and Representative Greg Vitale will be there. They will have—there will be 20 local vendors, EVs, solar, you name it, composting services—I think Mother Compost, which operates out of Linville Orchards, which takes your vegetable garbage and runs it through their biodigestor. They're heating one of their buildings through the heat that comes off the biodigestor. There'll be an electrical vehicle showcase. It really is a wonderful time for kids and adults to come and learn something more about climate change and what we're all going through and some ways that we can mitigate it and adapt to it. So I wanted to invite you all to come, if at all possible. 11 to 2 on Saturday, March the 7th, at the Kreck in Havaford Township.
Hello, my name's Doug Blasey. I reside with my family at 215 Upland Way in Wayne or Radnor. And I just wanted to make a comment on the Wawa Order Sustaining the Land Use Appeal. It strikes me—my primary concern, and I thought my family's—my wife was the one—our children are, you know, are out, but other neighbors—was the location of the main building. And many of us, if there were going to be the Wawa, preferred it closer to Aberdeen so there would be less pedestrian traffic across the gas station area to get to the shop. And that was a concern related, really, to children coming out of either St. Catherine's or the middle school, or young people in general, crossing to go to the store. So we thought it would be better to have the store closer to the corner. And I understand before the matter was appealed, it was one of three options that Wawa was willing to have the township consider and—to do. But as I read the order, I believe what was appealed was their initial proposal. So what appears to be approved is the initial proposal. So I hope the township, as it considers its legal options, would make sure that the other options—if where they're preferable to the township and the planning commission—could somehow still be left on the table and selected, if desirable, to the community.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Michael Lake from the 4th Ward. I believe in getting to the root of any problem and not just throwing money at the symptoms. This township has a serious spending problem if the go-to method for increased funding is simply raising property taxes year after year. If substantial increases are the only way you can balance a budget, then please admit this now and don't wait until the fall. In the meantime, for every spending proposal from this point forward, please do a stop-and-think and exercise the following questions—make sure—the—I'm sorry—the following questions are fully answered before presenting proposals and approving additional funds. What problem exactly is this expenditure solving? Is it a one-time cost, or is it recurring? What is the current solution and where does the solution fall flat? What is the cost savings in any, and will this help offset costs for the initiatives? What is the cost or risk of not doing anything? And more specifically, how and when will this spending directly benefit the quality of life for Radnor residents? We tend to hear bits and pieces, but the proposals are not presented in a holistic fashion. For example, two weeks ago, I believe I heard township staff suggest that the new township website management system will save several staff hours per week, simply through reduced content maintenance and ease of use. This is fantastic, but what are those costs? What are those numbers saved? If we don't know those numbers, how can we track the key performance indicators to make sure that we're actually meeting these goals? I really hope you ask these tough questions on every expenditure request moving forward. 6% year-over-year annual tax increases is not sustainable for most Radnor residents. If it doesn't affect you, congratulations. Through the power of compounding, a 6% increase for five straight years will push a $1,500 property tax bill to over $2,000. This is your current trajectory, and I haven't heard otherwise. The new Green Deal we really need is one where the township collects and respects the residents' green in a more sustainable manner. Extra taxes come from somewhere. In my case, it directly reduces the amount of disposable income that I am able to donate to Radnor Wayne Little League and the Radnor Educational Foundation. These taxes—these tax increases have real opportunity costs. Please, please, please rein in your spending.
Dan Sherry, Wayne. The topic that I'm going to be talking about tonight is the separation agreement between Radnor and the former township manager, which despite being voted on at the last public Radnor Board of Commissioners meeting, was not provided to the public to actually review at the meeting, despite multiple requests.
Mr. Sherry, this is not on the agenda for today. Could you please consider moving your comment to the end when it is more appropriate?
I will consider it. I reject it. And I decline your invitation to do so. I'm not going to wait till the end of the meeting.
Mr. Sherry, please focus on one of the issues which is on the agenda.
Nope. I'm going to focus on the separation agreement, which was in the press all week, which was in the press last week.
Thank you, Mr. Sherry. This is on the agenda today.
So I'm going to continue. Yep. It's regarding the agenda.
Commissioner Larkin, kindly let Mr. Sherry proceed. It's really much easier to—
Mr. Sherry, it was out of order. I understood that you were in favor of the rules of order.
It is absolutely unfathomable that you would not allow the public to see the document at the last meeting.
Mr. Sherry, please focus on one of the issues.
I'm now bringing it up at the start of this meeting. There was no other time for me to bring it up because I didn't see the document.
Mr. Sherry, this is not on the agenda.
So with that, two disclaimers before I continue.
Mr. Sherry, we have a specific time for you to discuss this.
Yes, I do. I'm going to be talking about the separation agreement, which I'm now seeing after it was voted on by the board.
Point—microphone. Sorry. So at the first meeting, the description of public participation was, "Are encouraged"—encouraged being the key word—to give public comment relevant to items on the current agenda. If the resident doesn't believe they're going to be here for the full meeting or at the end of the meeting, then they can comment on any topic that they feel the need to talk about. So, I mean, I don't know what Mr. Sherry's schedule is for tonight, but if he's not able to stay for the whole meeting, he should be allowed to talk now on the comments he wants to make at the beginning of the meeting.
Fortunately, that's not what the Sunshine Law says.
That's not what the Sunshine Law says at all. You need legislation to restrict me. You don't have legislation. You've never had legislation to restrict us.
Mr. Sherry, that's not correct.
No, it is correct. Show me a resolution or an ordinance that says that public comment at the start of the meeting must be restricted. Because the Sunshine Act, Mr. Larkin, as I've pointed out before, says "at or maybe before the board for consideration."
And that's what we put on the agenda, Mr. Sherry.
For all I know, during new or old business, the board might want to talk about the separation agreement. So that's my forecast.
Request this be allowed in this case?
Thank you.
We're chewing into time here.
I'll continue with this after being continually interrupted. And these are the two disclaimers that I'd like to make before I actually get to the root of my comments. Today, a friend of 20 years, as well as a Radnor resident and a personal mentor of mine, died unexpectedly. This has two implications for my comments tonight. One, it makes my voice quaver as a result of raw grief. It tends to do that. The second is, it takes any patience I have for a frivolous interruption and reduces it to zero. That's my disclaimer. Now, getting on to the separation agreement, which we didn't have the opportunity to see as the public at the last meeting. The only thing we were told at the meeting was that there were anti-disparagement clauses included in it.
Mr. Sherry, that is not on the agenda for today.
And that—and that those anti-disparagement clauses were on this board, as well as on the former township manager. And that rose my interest. Because I had always thought that public officials in Pennsylvania had certain types of immunity, particularly when they appear at public meetings and appear up on the dais, in that if they speak, even with malice, even with defamatory statements, there's not an action in civil litigation. And I did some research and sent every member on this board an email in terms of what I found.
Do you have one minute?
Which was called—the—so you interrupted me for a prolonged period of time. Please do not have that count against my time. It's absolutely unfathomable.
You have 50 seconds.
The high-public-official immunity doctrine indicates that when this board meets and appears up on this dais and speaks about matters before the board, there is no recovery against the board in civil law. And of course, that's what breach of contract is. It's a civil remedy. So what I did was, I sent this board an email pointing out some law that I thought was on point and asking the board to inquire from the solicitor whether this board, in this narrow confine, has the high-public-official immunity doctrine behind it. When you appear at a public meeting and when you're speaking from the dais, I also attached some law from other commissioners in Pennsylvania, fairly recent law talking about that within the confines of anti-disparagement clauses that were entered into.
Mr. Sherry, your time is now up.
And thereafter, speaking to the press—
Mr. Sherry, please wrap it up.
—and finding that there was no action at law.
Mr. Sherry, your microphone is not on. Please wrap it up.
And I asked the board to ask the solicitor as to whether or not that immunity applied. I hope somebody has done that. Because while it is a political penalty that one pays for being timid or awkward with speech, this board shouldn't be operating under the auspices—
Mr. Sherry, please resume your seat.
—that there are several ramifications when one comes before this board and listens to people from the board—
Mr. Sherry, sit down.
—talking about what they did. And because, however—
Mr. Sherry.
—an awkward and timid—
Daniel.
—this wreck is interrupting me, I'll have to reserve the rest of my comments for the rest of the day.
Daniel, sit down. Sit down now. Your microphone is not on.
Commissioner Larkin, please. Don't be rude.
This certainly has not been matched by any type of leadership in terms of—
Point of order. May I have a point of order, please? Commissioner Larkin, were you saying something?
I don't recognize it, but okay.
Commissioner Larkin, were you saying something? I'm sorry.
Mr. Sherry, your time has elapsed. Please sit down.
And yet, your timidity remains.
Thank you for that. Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, let's move on to a presentation by the Willows Preserve.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Tish Long, and I'm president of the Willows Park Preserve Board of Directors. My fellow board members and I are delighted to be here tonight to share the extraordinary progress that we've made on the Willows Mansion project. In order to save time, because I know time is important this evening, I'm going to hold my comments, and certainly if you have questions for later, we're happy to answer any of them. The only thing I'd like to share before I introduce Skip Kunda is the fact that in January, we received the Level 1 Arboretum status for the Willows Park Preserve. It is awesome. We are so excited. We have over 50 species of different trees, and our signature tree on the property, of course, is the Dawn Redwood, the Meta sequoia. So on that note, because you know how dedicated we are to this project and how much we love it, I'm going to introduce Skip Kunda, who will speak to you on construction, and then Claire Streibert will speak on fundraising and programming. Can I turn it over to you, Skip?
Good evening.
Good evening. My presentation is short. In January, Kaler Roofing began roof replacement, and thanks to a mild winter, we're three weeks ahead of schedule. As you watch the new roof go on, you'll see a change from the black shingle style that was previously there. That's because we're restoring the mansion to its original red Ludovici tile, a terracotta tile that was selected in 1910 by architect Charles Barton Keen. Not only will the new roof look stunning, but it happens to come with a 75-year warranty. We expect the roof to be completed by the end of May, based on the weather and our progress so far. While the roof is getting started, we also completed the interior asbestos removal. I know that's of interest to you. Restoration of the nine dormers and the three chimneys and the installation of an advanced lightning rod system will be done alongside with the construction of the roof. After that, we will move on to the stucco windows, trim, doors, et cetera, sometime this summer. This will make the building watertight and complete Phase 1 of our construction plan. Phase 2 design work has begun as well, and it focuses on interior improvements and updates to the exterior spaces. We've engaged an architectural firm, Archer &amp; Buchanan, to handle this work along with Veridian Landscaping Studio. All in all, things are going well, quite well. We haven't had any major surprises. The roof decking is in unbelievably good condition, and the scope of work and the vendor execution is going mainly according to plan. Later in the summer, we will have more plans to share on the next phase of construction. And now, to outline details of our fundraising progress, is my fellow board member, Dr.
Thanks, Skip, and good evening, Commissioners. I'm Claire Streibert, board member and chair of the fundraising committee. I'm pleased to be here tonight to present an update on our fundraising efforts. We have successfully completed Phase 1, which Skip talked about in terms of construction, and we are actively engaged in Phase 2 of our campaign. To help in our Phase 2 efforts, we have secured the services of Jane Camp. She's a senior consultant from Schultz &amp; Williams with over 30 years' experience raising funds for nonprofits like the Pennsylvania Ballet, Curtis Institute of Music, the Philadelphia Orchestra, and the University of Pennsylvania. She's an integral part of our team and actively engaged in the major donor campaign as we speak. Last year, we held several events at the mansion and secured corporate sponsors, including Bartlett Tree Experts, Merrill Lynch, Jaguar Main Line, EDA Enterprises, Brandywine Realty Trust, Home Depot, and Do It Best. The response from the local business community has been very positive, and we expect even more corporate participation in 2020. The Saturday morning open houses over the summer were also quite popular and resulted in several walk-in contributors. We executed our first large-scale fundraiser event last fall, and based on that success, we're going to be doing two more this year in May and in September. Also, we had a Giving Tuesday campaign, which focused on raising additional funds for the roof and awareness through social media, which also exceeded our expectations and goals. Since signing the new lease in June of 2019, we've experienced an overall uptick in donor interest. Major donors in particular appreciate the longer project horizon because it extends the impact of their investment. We have 100% board participation, and the majority have made a multi-year commitment. Our plan is to raise $1 million by Labor Day and to begin our Phase 2, and we've achieved nearly half of this benchmark already. A primary cultivation tool that we'll be using this year is programming. Our goal is to bring our mission to life so residents and donors experience the mansion in a new way. Besides the physical improvements to the house, the Willows Park Preserve is rolling out a calendar of events geared toward nature exploration, art appreciation, community building, and fun. And our goal is to encourage you and your family to visit and hear just a few of the many events we've planned. We'll be offering handicap-accessible tours of our arboretum unique tree collection. There'll be nature hikes, wildflower walks, yoga classes, lecture series, concerts, and arts events. And all, by the way, this will be free. So for Arbor Day, Earth Day, and Summer Solstice, we'll also be having additional events planned. And John Fisher's Winding Way Records will be kicking off the Summer Concert Series on June 14th, with two Wednesday concerts on July 15th and August 19th, and a Fall Music Festival on September 12th. So in addition to the concert—the Summer Concert Series, Winding Way Records will be hosting an open mic night on the first Wednesday of every month, from 7 to 9 p.m. year-round. So in the works also are art exhibits, book signings, lecture series on topics that align with our mission, such as combating climate change. Our monthly newsletter lists—the monthly e-newsletter lists the upcoming events. If you'd like to receive a copy or if you have event ideas, please send an email to We also plan to add an event calendar to our website. So that's our update.
Thank you very much. Moving on.
Yeah. Just one question. It sounded like you're having a lot of success with fundraising. Is there a specific—I heard a good way there from the $1 million goal. Is there a specific number that we've raised so far?
As Claire said, that we don't have the actual dollar amount to give you, but we've raised just under a half a million dollars to date since we started last June, Jake, and our goal is to raise $1 million by Labor Day, so we're halfway there. I really think with what we're hearing out there—because I'm a frontline fundraiser—I think we might even be able to exceed that. So we're very, very pleased with how fundraising is going. Any other questions?
Well, does that answer your question, or what's—so that's by Labor Day? So what's the—is there an overall goal, or is it by Labor Day that's—
Well, we know what our overall goal is. We need $6 million in which to do this project. We have received $1 million from our anonymous donor to do Phase 1, plus we've received other sizable gifts, some anonymously, some not, like from some of the—Merrill Lynch has come up and whatnot. And I think maybe Evelyn might actually be able to address this a little bit in terms of how you will be able to actually access—because I know some of you seem to be really interested in knowing the actual detail of it. And that would be posted on our 501(c)(3), correct, Evelyn?
Absolutely.
Evelyn, can—
Thank you, Evelyn. All nonprofit organizations, all tax-exempt 501(c)(3) organizations, all financial records are public. So our 990s, when they're filed, the annual tax return will be available for public viewing, and you'll be able to see not only how much they've raised in terms of their income and revenue, but also any donors are also—you have to advise and notify as to any donor information as well. So that's all readily available. Obviously, they haven't filed their 990 for the tax year that just completed, but they're in the works of doing that, and you'll be able to see that. And upon request, you know, we can provide any other further information. Anything else?
So—and I'll just follow up on Commissioner Abel's, as he's—we've talked about these issues. So the—the issue was that the—there'd be concurrent expenditures with—the township expenditures being concurrent with WPP raising funds. So is that happening?
Well, actually, the way that the lease is structured is that the WPP, there are obligations on both parties to make commercially reasonable efforts in terms of the progress on the construction. So for example, the WPP was obligated to make commercially reasonable efforts to begin Phase 1 construction within six months of lease execution. They did that. The township's concurrent or obligation was to begin the utility infrastructure upgrades, again, commercially reasonable efforts to do that within one year of that lease signing.
Have we done that?
So my understanding is actually the WPP and the township staff have been working collaboratively throughout this process and actually have—my understanding is that the sewer upgrades—and I can get the actual—and this might be—Steve would have more information on this.
Sure. So the sanitary sewer was televised. 50-foot was determined needed to be replaced. The board approved that. That contract's been awarded, and the water line replacement is under design to go out to bid this year. So we're—we're doing what we're supposed to.
Yeah. They're working really great together. It's really—I mean, it's tremendous how much progress has been made since June of 2019, when the lease was signed, and the good efforts by both the township staff and the WPP to really work in concert. They're a model of a public-private partnership right now, which is just great.
And I—in this case, for this building, my belief is that WPP saves taxpayers' money, relieves the taxpayer of a burden which we otherwise would have, and therefore makes it worth pursuing.
Absolutely.
And following that statement, so the roof right now being worked on is being funded solely from funds raised—
Solely from private funds.
—from private funds. And what will be the next—next area that would be worked on?
Do you want to address this question? So actually, Rich, we're going to have enough funds, we believe, to not only do the roof, but we're doing three chimneys, the nine dormers, and then we're going to move into replacing windows as needed and the doors. We're working on that with Archer &amp; Buchanan. And also, to address the facade of the building, if you're familiar with it, we're thinking now we might need a whole fresh coat. Maybe we can just do something that would be more in keeping with the house and not have that brand-new kind of look to it.
So what is the nature of the dependency on the schedule of the township doing the sanitary sewer replacements and water with respect to the work that you have ongoing, funded through private?
Well, so Steve, you can speak to this, I think, better than I, but I believe that your work will soon be completed, correct?
Well, we hope to go out to bid for the water line, domestic and fire. We're working with the WPP consultant to make sure the load is proper, what they need from a water standpoint. I believe we're working well, hand in hand.
So there's no mutual dependencies as far as construction, and to the extent that there are, they are being met, then, at this point?
Yes, it really has been exceptional.
So when is it going to be done?
Well, Rich, come on and come to some of our fundraisers.
I—I—I did—I've been to something. I've been to a couple of things over there, but not recently.
So we are very optimistic. We think momentum is building. We think once the roof gets on, I think everyone will see the fabulous iconic roof of the Willows Mansion, and it will draw attention. And we are really having success with Schultz &amp; Williams. It's been pretty tremendous, and we are very pleased. Just this past week, we hired Veridian Landscape Studio to create a master plan of the lease premise, which will also help everyone in the township understand what we are going to be doing. Of course, we're going to be restoring the courtyard as is and the fountain wall, which has the original cistern from 1910, the dolphin wall, and of course, the iconic wishing well circle with the beautiful Samuel Yellen ironwork there. We're going to make sure that all of that is done, and we're doing it all for you. It's—for—this is a community project, and we really want everyone to come and enjoy it and partake. We think it's awesome. We think it's groundbreaking. We think it will be a tri-state area attraction, and I think it's a win-win for everybody, and we're delighted to partner with Radnor Township.
So right now, is it closed to the public, or is the public using it, or just—
No, actually, the League of Women Voters had a wonderful event in there to celebrate the 100th years of the suffragette movement last Friday. Now, we're having tiny events there. Lisa had a wonderful town hall meeting there. If any of you would like to have a town hall meeting, the—we can absolutely accommodate. We had Jeff Groff from Winter Tourcom, the estate historian, to speak to us about Charles Barton Keen on January the 25th. On March the 14th, we're having Suzanne Amrich from Archer &amp; Buchanan come and speak to us about the new renderings for Phase 2, which are very exciting. All are welcome. That will be on our newsletter, so I hope you all will come. That's Saturday morning. Lisa came to the last one. Wonderful breakfast. It's a wonderful way to come and see the house. So and honestly, we're so lucky to have John Fisher, who is an ex-commissioner, dedicate so much time to the Willows. He loves the project, and he is committing all of this wonderful music talent for free, and we are very grateful because we feel that the Summer Concert Series will become the backbone of our programming for this summer and fall.
So what's the next event?
So I'm not at all surprised that you're able to just speak about this at length, but we've gone pretty far beyond the brief that we had asked you to give initially.
I know, I know.
So I'm going to say, why don't we move on to consideration?
Oh, just one—just again, what's the next? Just one, just again, what's the next event and when, but what's the time and date of the next?
It will be June the 14th. It's a Sunday and Winding Way Records will be there to have a wonderful concert.
Jack, just before we move on, I'd just like to add one thing. So I went to that party that you had in the summer and I thought it was extremely well-done. It was first class. I was the only commissioner up here. You went? Okay, okay. So I think you can speak to what a, what a first-class, well-done job it was. Also, when it comes to you, I have not been on your website, but I have, I do follow you guys on Instagram and the fact that you're getting a social media presence, I think is a very important aspect in today to really make yourself aware to, not the people like me that are old, but also the young, the youngins out there that that's how they kind of connect and find a place to go. So, well done.
Consent agenda. Is there any item that any commissioner would like to remove from consent agenda?
Letter F, would you like to pull?
Okay, letter F. Rich, lead us in.
I've asked Resolution 2028, 2020-28 authorizing application for a stoplight improvement at Lancaster and King of Pressure Road per tap trail plan be pulled and an explanation provided and a detail of what we're doing here.
Okay, Steve?
Thank you, Commissioner. So Commissioner Booker, this is the TE160 maintenance form that we've done for many signals in the past. So what's proposed at Lancaster Avenue and Radnor Chester Road, as well as King of Pressure Avenue and Radnor Chester Road for the tap trail are ADA upgrades. So as part of that, we have to supply PennDOT with a TE160, which in a nutshell states that Radnor Township will own, operate, and maintain the signal as we do now, further on in accordance with PennDOT rules and regulations, which is what we currently do. But because we're making the change to it, we need to do the TE160 for both of those intersections.
So my understanding that this is a request for an expenditure, is there an expenditure with this?
No, there is no expenditure. This is just part of that design process. This is just one of the boxes to check off in the design, the final design process for these signals.
So what's the, what's the cost of the final design, I guess is the question?
For the TE160, sir, it is zero. Peter presented, I'd have to go back and get those numbers.
Approximately.
I don't have that with me.
Is it a half a million dollars or a million dollars?
I honestly can't recall off the top of my head.
If I recall, these two lights also are part of the programmatic changes that Penn was going to be working on in connection with their redevelopment of 145 King of Pressure Road.
That's strictly with the traffic adaptive system. These are physical changes to the ADA, to include ADA ramps.
So this is ADA ramps, this is not the lights themselves?
Correct, sir.
And this doesn't encompass any changes either in the timing, configuration, or electronics of the lights?
Other than for pedestrian.
Is there a push button?
Yeah, other than for pedestrian crossings, that's it.
So there's a push button for that?
Correct.
And this is in connection with the trail?
The tap trail.
And is this, is the overall for this expense going to be covered by any grants or not?
Yes, I think we've received over $3 million in grants, somewhere between that and.
For this trail?
Correct.
But, but not for any other trail though, nearby?
Not, not that I'm aware of, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any additional commissioner comment on this issue? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes, seven to zero. Taking the balance of the consent agenda, all in favor of passing the consent agenda less item F, which has previously been approved, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Consent agenda passes, seven to zero. Moving on to 4A, caucus on 147 Conestoga Road.
Evening, Nick Camilla, representing the applicant. This is a matter that was approved unanimously by the planning commission. There was relief granted by the zoning hearing board. In a nutshell, this is the site, existing condition site. Currently, there is a twin on the property and then a large open area. As you can see here as well, here's the existing twin. The other side of the twin is not included in this development. What's being proposed and what the zoning board granted relief for was to create an additional lot in this section and the applicant is proposing a single-family dwelling as indicated in this area. Here, here is Conestoga Road, Doyle Road. As you're going up Conestoga Road in that direction is Lancaster Avenue. As you come up Doyle Road, you also have Lancaster Avenue as well. There were several comments from staff. There was a couple, there were a couple waivers requested. One was for the, the typical 500 feet, all development within 500 feet. Included in the plan is an actual existing expanded condition plan that shows the roadways in the area within 500 feet. Doesn't go into the detail as required by your ordinance, which requires or sewer lines, storm drains, culvers, bridges, things of that nature, but it does show an aerial photograph of it. This is a waiver that's commonly granted by the board. The other waiver deals with the board's ability to request the applicant to add additional right-of-way. In this instance, we are adding a sidewalk along Doyle Road where none currently exists. Actually, I don't believe there's any sidewalk on either side of Doyle Road. There is an existing sidewalk on Conestoga Road on this side of Conestoga that goes up to Lancaster Avenue and extends all the way down to West Wayne Avenue as well. The proposal is for creating the lot for the twin, which is consistent with the lot immediately adjacent to it and also consistent with many of the other lots as you go up toward Lancaster Avenue. And there is no variance requested for this site at all where the single-family dwelling would be located. As you see, there is right-of-way here. The sidewalk is exclusively in the right-of-way except for this area down here. One of the comments is that the applicant granted easement, which they're willing to do, for the sidewalk, which is not in the public right-of-way. All utilities are in the right-of-way. There is really no need for additional right-of-way on this site. The other comments were, number three in the first two I addressed, number three on page two in the Gannett Fleming letter, talked about the requirement of an ENS plan and requirements of anything over 5,000 square feet. We understand this plan has 7,795.
Counselor, what's an ENS plan?
Erosion and sedimentation.
Erosion and sedimentation control.
Right.
Just for the?
Yeah. And what we proposed is that actually we will be depicting the ENS and the measures for construction, but we would ask for a waiver that that does not have to be actually submitted to DCCD. Everything else is a will comply on stormwater, number three. We'll have to work that out with the township engineer prior to final plan approval. But that was number three on page three under stormwater.
Is it infiltration?
Regarding infiltration.
So?
But I don't believe it's an issue with infiltration.
So?
I know that's always an issue with you, Mr. Booker.
Yeah, it is, it is. But what's, so what is this? It says, I'm looking at stormwater number three from Roger's letter or you took it someplace else?
No, from Roger's letter.
Please show .054 cubic feet per, for, what's the S, second? Cubic feet infiltration rate as the exfiltration component under pond report. So what does that mean?
I'll turn to Roger.
That's some details that are embedded in the software that does the stormwater calculation that we noticed that was, was incorrect. And just for the board's knowledge, this will be addressed for final review and also at the, at the grading permit stage.
So this doesn't, this is merely a mistake that, that was in the output of what you submitted. It shows it as infiltration, but it's really the exfiltration component? You're correcting them?
I believe my understanding and I'll, go ahead, Roger.
Again, it's, it's technical stuff in the middle of the software that we probably don't need to get into, but it's just an input error. It's, it's, it's just cleaning up some of the calculations.
Well, I do think it's important so we understand. Does, does the, does, does this area perk and will they be requesting a waiver from, from, from stormwater infiltration component of the ordinance? And how is what they submitted reflected versus what is the actual case at the site?
I'll read the comment from our engineer and Roger, you can expound on this. I don't know if you received this comment or not, but it states, "The exfiltration component cannot be used when using the manual storage type, which was used to reflect the storage volume provided by the Brentwood storm tanks. Exfiltration can only be used for contour and UG chamber storage types. Consequently, the calculation cannot be revised as suggested by GF. I can work this out directly with GF if need be, since it's a technical comment." I'll show that to Roger.
And I will add that we will work it out. I'm, I'm not going to comment on this right now. We will work this out. It's, it's a minor issue, in my opinion. And, and Mr. Booker, to answer your question, yes, the ground does perk.
Because stormwater is a, is a big deal in this area. The water comes off this property and goes right into, into the West Wayne Preserve.
Before, before you, before you see this again, we will have this, I hope to have this resolved. Do you think that's realistic, Roger, at least?
I, I would think so, yes.
Well, is it the applicant that's making the correction? Roger's checking it or is Roger correcting it?
We are, the two engineers will speak. It's a technical issue with, beyond me, Rich, it's beyond me. It's a technical issue.
Well, we have to approve, I have, I'm elected to approve this, Nick, so I want to understand if something's wrong, what was wrong and how, who's fixing it and how are they doing it?
That's what we are trying to get to the bottom of. And that's why I said, before you see this again, it will be addressed.
So it sounds like there's going to be tanks installed at the site for holding a stormwater?
Brentwood storm tanks.
Brentwood storm tanks, we just, we're just told, okay.
And the engineer did comment.
You got to talk on the mic.
The engineer, my engineer did comment to Roger's concerns, but we just haven't heard a response, so I'm assuming we're going to work it out in the future.
And I understand and I, I, I live in that area, so I'm aware of the stormwater issues. And as I mentioned, we intend to have this resolved before you see this plan for final approval.
This is the, this is the proposed Brentwood storm tank area.
And that will be used to retain stormwater on-site and infiltrate it?
That's correct.
And so merely, is it just a, basically you're showing it a different, you're showing it as it's coming off, out of the tank and it's going to stay in the tank?
There is a relief, there is relief into the nearest inlet.
And so I, what I'm getting from that is that there, that relief is not going to be a burden on the stormwater system to the extent that the water comes out of that tank into the, into the stormwater?
I'd have to rely on, on Roger.
Roger says he's going to look at that, so that remains an open issue. So when we resolve it, how, we're going to resolve it by not, not having the discharge? Taking the discharge away or correcting the numbers on what the discharge is?
I believe my understanding was the numbers have to be corrected so that Roger can make a determination and that's what we intend to do.
What if the numbers are corrected and Roger says that's not acceptable? What, what will happen then? You won't come back with it at all?
Obviously, then we'll have an issue that you will have to address.
All right.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Hearing none, thank you very much, guys.
Well, it's a caucus, right? So we can?
Just caucus.
You mean questions for these two or caucus? We, you're saying the caucus is over with no other comment other than my, nobody else has any comments? All right, well, I do have other questions then before you guys leave. So explain to me, the zoning hearing board, you, you received waivers, what were the waivers from the zoning hearing board about having this, this single, this, this new single-family home next to the twin?
Sure. It was relief that was granted by the zoning hearing board. It was a variance granted.
And the variance was for what was the area?
Right, so the variance was granted just for this portion of the development. So where the twin is located, the relief was granted for the width and the size of the lot where the twin is located. And it matched actually the twin right next to it in both size and width.
And had you not gotten that relief, then you wouldn't be able to do the subdivision because the line would need to be too close?
It would have made the dwelling very narrow. Actually, initially, we had gone into the board and asked to put a twin on this site. We eventually revised the plan and just requested the single-family dwelling. It would have made the building envelope very, very narrow.
What's the side yard right there? 10 feet?
It's 10 feet, which is the required side yard setback.
So when you had the twin in there, it was a wider building, that 10-foot put it too close to the existing structure?
We needed relief on this lot as well as the other lot if we were putting the twin in, both as to setback, mainly as to setbacks. We had the lot area for it, it was just the setbacks we would need a relief for, but we actually removed that request and as I mentioned, just requested the relief for Lot One, Lot Two standing on its own.
So Lot Two complies, but the, the request was for making the, the old lot, so to speak, to allowing that to non-conform?
Correct.
And, and matching the other side?
That's correct.
And I guess because this has got two front yards with the Doyle and Conestoga?
Yes, it is. And you have 25-foot setbacks, as you see on each as well.
What's the square footage of the house that's going to be installed and the, and the number of floors?
It's 1772, including porch and deck.
1,772 square feet, including porch and deck. Is that building area or is that the total square foot?
I know the maximum building coverage, which is what you're, when you're talking about an envelope, is building coverage, the required is 35% and proposed is 17.5%. So we would multiply 17.5 times 11,499 and that would be the building coverage if you wanted to see the building coverage.
So this, this house will be a 3,400 square foot house, approximately 3,400? And, and you have an outbuilding in the back, a garage?
Detached garage.
Detached garage?
That's included in the building coverage required.
That's included in that number?
Yes.
And that's a one-story garage or the living space above that?
That's correct.
One story?
No, no living space.
No, just one story?
That's correct.
One-story garage?
A frame roof.
And what is going to be the style of the home? Is it going to be consistent with the others?
It is.
I, I'm not looking for rendering, just, just general description. It's only caucus here.
Front porch, you know, similar to the surrounding architects.
What's the siding, stucco?
No, it's all cementitious siding.
You want a, cementitious siding?
Cementitious siding.
And, and what's the style of the roof? Is it mansard roof? Is it, is it caulked roof?
We'll have a A-frame roof with gables and dormers.
A-frame with gables and dormers. And what's the overall height of the structure?
35.
And that, that's, that complies?
That complies.
Is there any, any comment from the neighbors that you've gotten?
Not to date.
Thank you. I'd ask questions for everybody, you know?
Cover it online. Thank you, board.
Next stop is eight twelve slash eight twenty-two Glen Brook Avenue.
This actually, um, was, you may recall, and I believe we have, uh, the old site plan here. This started several years ago. This started several years ago. This is the area, you have Bryn Mawr Avenue, um, the Wawa on Bryn Mawr Avenue is located in this location, uh, County Line Road, which turns into Hereford Avenue, located here, the hospital over here, and this is Glen Brook as it comes, uh, in here. Uh, this site, um, originally consisted of three buildings that had a mix of commercial and residential use in it, as well as the old Bryn Mawr thrift shop building in this location. Um, it's Zone C1, and our C1 zoning only permits commercial development, does not permit residential development. So we had some existing nonconformity in here in that we had apartments basically over commercial uses. Um, Tim Rubin came in and asked for relief, and was granted relief to develop these three buildings into apartments, total of fourteen apartments, but I made in six, eight, and two, I believe, and removing the old Bryn Mawr thrift shop building where parking was, um, was placed. This old site was vastly nonconforming as to the parking requirement. As a result of Tim's development, it became conforming to the parking development, and remains conforming today. Um, he had rehab two of the buildings. And we should have pictures, I believe, of that rehab process in this plan. Here it is. These are the style of, of the buildings that were rehabbed, that are now entirely residential. There is no, uh, there is no commercial development, uh, on this particular site now. You'll see what the buildings currently look, look like. There's photographs here of what the buildings did look like prior to Tim developing it. This particular photograph here is of the existing building. Uh, Tim's now at the stage where he wishes to develop this building here. Um, and, and as I mentioned, we were granted permission back a couple of years ago for two apartment buildings. This building is not in very good condition, as you can tell. Uh, Tim was granted relief to add one more apartment to this building. So, in, in effect, what we're doing here is adding a third apartment, and, um, to some extent, taking the building down to its foundation and to its walls, and rebuilding it on the same foundation, and actually adding some parking underneath the building itself to comply with the parking requirement. So that's what we had before you, um, this evening, uh, the land development, basically to, um, take this building down to its walls and to its foundation, rebuild it, and add one additional apartment to it. Um, the comments. Again, I don't believe there's anything of, um, any issue here, looking again at Fleming. Um, again, the five-hundred-foot requirement regarding all utilities and culverts and bridges within five-hundred feet. We're asking for a waiver of that. And, and this is also, well, if they're going to request the additional right-of-way, we would request a waiver from that if there was a request for additional right-of-way. Um, and we will consolidate the deed. Evidently, there was a deed that we had presented, but it, it appears as if it was not recorded. And all, all we mean here is that, right now, I believe the deed may indicate these as separate parcels, and they've actually been consolidated. And what we'll be doing is just showing the entire outline of the description, uh, for, on one deed, to make it consistent. Um, I know that there was some issue here about a right-of-way. I, we don't own some land, there's like an island, is it this location here, Will? At the top, I'm sorry. There's an island out here that actually is not owned by us, it's public right-of-way, we're not using it. Um, you know, I know that, the question, I think Steve raised the, raised the question at the last planning commission meeting about it. Um, so I, there's really not a heck of a lot on the review letters, since this was actually developed a couple of years ago.
What does that mean, this was developed a couple of years ago?
These buildings, this was approved, an approved development, as I had mentioned, I believe, back in two thousand sixteen. These two buildings were renovated. This building is now being ready to renovate, and that's where we got the relief. And since we are taking this building down, we're back before this board for, uh, land development approval.
I just had one question. Mr. Kengley, you, you said that you're taking the building down to the foundation, but you're also putting parking underneath it. I wasn't sure how that works. You're, you're taking it down to the foundation and adding parking underneath, or you're stripping it down, starting with parking underneath? I'd, it's unclear to me. No construction expert, I'm just wondering.
Uh, Will Daggett, I'm with Mom and Inc., the engineering company. Um, we are actually taking the foundation away as well. We're supposed to, we are given relief to build within the same footprint, so we are removing the foundation. Yes.
You're completely removing the foundation?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we're, but it has to remain, so we were granted relief to be in the same footprint, and then the square footage of the new building cannot exceed the square footage of the proposed building.
Okay, so you're going down to dirt, you're starting with a parking garage, building up from there?
Yes.
Okay, that's clear to me now. Thank you.
Yeah, I should clarify that. We're building basically on the same dimensions of the existing foundation.
It's totally staying within the original footprint, just a theory. And what about the stormwater infiltration?
It's already there, I believe.
So the stormwater infrastructure was put in place during the previous, uh, grading permit they had to receive, uh, for this, so there is no stormwater for this construction.
And access, I'm sorry, go ahead, Rich. Access to the parking, I assume, is only from the back, correct? Like the existing ones, there's not going to be any access to the parking from Glen Brook, so, okay. Thank you.
So, was it, currently it's a daycare, is that what it says on here?
No, it's, right now, I think it's vacant.
Vacant?
But it was, it was apartments and commercial. It was commercial on the bottom and, and...
Right, commercial, but that commercial was, it said daycare in, in the, in the documents here.
Oh, was it? Okay.
Long, long time, so that's not current?
That hasn't been a daycare for a very long time.
Some, sometime, okay.
Um, a building that is really in disrepair. And the two that they've already done, um, look really nice.
Not hearing anything else? Okay, thanks, guys. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Moving on to item four C, ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero eight, introduction to amending the zoning map of Radnor Township by rezoning Delaware County Tax Parcel Number thirty-six stroke oh five stroke zero three two zero three stroke zero zero from R1 Residence District to PI Planned Institutional District. Uh, is there a member of staff who could, or, could you maybe tell us about this?
Good evening, Jamie John here on behalf of Mainline Classical Academy. I'm just going to see if I can upload a couple, um, exhibits onto the screen.
John, while we're waiting, I, I sent you an email, did you see that? I just sent you an email. I'll, I'll ask you soon as we get done this.
As you can see on that zoning map, it indicates where Mainline Classical Academy is currently located. The address is four fifty-five South Roberts Road. The private school, uh, that's kindergarten through seventh grade, has been located there for the last four years. Um, they were presented with the opportunity to purchase immediately adjacent property, which is currently zoned R1, contains a single-family dwelling, and we are seeking a zoning map amendment so that that adjacent parcel could also be rezoned, um, planned institu- institutional, so that the school can use it in connection with its existing campus.
And I'll defer to President, if you want to go first, I'm happy.
How about ladies first?
Ladies first, that's fine.
All right. Um, I just have a quick question. So, um, your, uh, your school is a five-oh-one C-three, correct? So you do not pay any taxes, or, okay. Um, do you know what, the, um, you know, we're certainly very concerned about tax revenue and, and whatnot. Do you know, um, so this property would also become nonprofit, and that the taxes on this would?
And, uh, Mr. Josh Tipton is here on behalf of the school, and he might better be able to answer some of the questions regarding tax status and enrollment and things of that sort.
Great, thank you, thank you. If you could just speak to that.
Uh, yes, good evening. Uh, that, that would be the, uh, the intent, is that once the, uh, four sixty-one South Roberts is being used for school purposes, that that would, similarly, we would be applying for tax exempt status for that?
Would, would you like to know the assessed value of that property?
Uh, am I allowed to ask that? I'm not sure if I'm allowed to ask that.
Sure, it's pub, it's public information. The assessed value of the property is six-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-two-forty. So currently, the taxes on that are somewhere around twenty thousand total, uh, for school, county, and township.
Would you be knocking the house down, or keeping it?
There are no plans to make changes, exterior changes to that building. We would maintain it as is.
So would you be using it for, um, so you're going to maintain the house that's currently on the property?
Correct.
And would you be using it for instructional use, or would this become a residence for someone that teaches there?
No, it would be, um, a combination of, I believe, additional office space and also some instructional space.
But to be clear, at this time, there's no plan for residences in there. Housing for any teachers, any administration?
Correct, no, it would be converted to educational use.
Okay.
Was this building once Dr. Cody's office, a pedi, an old pediatrician a long, long time ago? Do you remember?
I believe four fifty-five South Roberts, which is the current Classical Academy building, um, was, was a doctor's office.
It was a doctor's?
This is the, uh, carriage house-style, um, house that's, uh, that's next to it, that, that constitutes four sixty-one South Roberts.
Okay.
Can you guys re, have you spoken to the residents that live around this home? And so if that was going to become, uh, instructional, you know, during the day, kids in and out, that kind of thing, have they been fully made aware of this, or?
The school has reached out to, um, some of the neighbors, especially the immediately adjacent neighbors. They have explained, um, our request for the map amendment. Um, there were some concerns that the neighbors raised, such as stormwater, um, views of the building. Um, there's also a shared driveway on four sixty-one South Roberts Road with a residential property that's to the rear. There are two flag lots that are located there. Um, so the school has spoken to the neighbors about sort of the stormwater management things that they will be doing if they were to take that over and use it as part of the school. They, um, has spoken to them about additional landscaping that will be installed to sort of filter the views and any light concerns the neighbor has. They are also in discussion with, um, the neighbor with whom they share, the four sixty-one South Roberts Road shares that driveway, um, with respect to relocating that driveway, so that that residence can have its own driveway.
Is this property currently for sale on the open market, or is this a private negotiation right now?
It was, um, the school actually closed on the property. The owner of four sixty-one approached the school, and the closing occurred, um, last week.
So, so, so you're closed on, you, you, so how much was the, uh, transaction? It little, it'll, we'll get the numbers, so you can. It was six-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand the last one, uh, in nineteen ninety-eight. Six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand was the, was the price. Was it substantially more than that? But we will get the number, yeah. And, and it probably would have been a, you probably should have come beforehand. This, would you guys agree not to make it an exempt parcel? Would you continue to, would you agree as a part of the zoning to leave this, or would you agree not to file an exemption, file for an exemption on this parcel and leave it as a taxable parcel?
That's not a decision that we, um, would be able to make. Uh, Josh certainly couldn't make that, I'm sure. There is a school board that would have to make decisions such as that. Um, understanding that this would become a non-exempt parcel, I think, though, that there are benefits in the sense that the school, that some of the children that attend this school would not be attending public school by virtue of, you know, attending this school.
Well, the students are fungible, right? You couldn't, couldn't, you couldn't pin that down to any one student.
But there are township children that are educated here, and, and I don't think it's up to us to say that, um, we would be willing to make that a non-exempt parcel.
Well, I mean, others have in the, in the township in the past, because this is a burden to the ta, right now, it's on the taxable rolls, and it actually is, is a good number. And, um, you're asking us, I don't know how the, the other commissioners, but I know that I personally would have a hard time making these exempt, um, um, when we don't, but there's no need to do that, right? So, um, we don't have any, I wouldn't have any objection to the school using the parcel, but, I mean, it's, I mean, you already closed on it. We probably should have talked to us beforehand. But what if we don't, what if we don't grant the exemption?
Then obviously, they couldn't use it as part of the school unless we were to obtain some sort of a variance, which I think would be a very high hurdle to cross, um, for that aspect. But we, the school itself was under time constraints in terms of what the current owners wanted and when they wanted to close. And ideally, the school too would have waited until this map amendment went through. It just wasn't an option.
A question. So, it would be really close to one, two, three, maybe four or five houses. Is, would there be noise issues associated with this?
Again, the school has been there for the past four years, they haven't had...
With the new parcel, with the new, if you annex the new parcel?
Right, and they haven't had concerns, and I think they intend to be good neighbors, and, you know, they're not looking to, um, change the school itself. The only thing that this would enable would be to have an additional grade, grade eight.
So how many students do you currently have enrolled?
Approximately fifty-two students currently.
Fifty-two, and how many would you add to the enrollment?
Uh, this would allow for, uh, one additional, uh, grade, as well as just giving more flexibility in terms of the layout of the current classrooms, which are quite, um, you know, need to be used for a number of different classes right now. So there's, there's a, a constraint in terms of teachers having access to, uh, a dedicated classroom.
So anywhere between six to eight new students would be my guess? If you, if you're able to convert this, if you're adding a new grade, it's just a simple math, around six to eight new students?
That, that, that would be a, a fair estimate.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rice, can I ask you? So, I'm going to admit, I get, to me, this, and I'm no expert, this seems a little backwards. Shouldn't this have come before us prior to them closing on the property? Because at this point, we grant them this change, and so all the things you mentioned, and I, and I trust you, and I, and I'm sure you're not, you know, trying to not be true to your word to us here, but what's holding them to any of these, you know, we're going to work with the neighbors, we're going to put up the screening, we're going to do all these things. If we make this change, shouldn't...
I'm very, I'm very concerned about the precedent that it sets.
Well, let me, let's make sure we're talking about the same thing. This is a, a request to amend and add this property from residential to planned industrial. That by itself doesn't make this parcel tax exempt. What I heard was, they've been operating for four years and haven't filed for a tax exemption to the Board of Assessment. This board doesn't decide whether the property's exempt or not, the county does. So, if they file for a tax exemption, this board has the opportunity, the school district does, any of the taxing entities to contest that request for tax exemption, and there's this, a test that they have to meet. So they haven't done that yet, they're on the rolls, uh, Bill has the numbers here. Uh, so you're just being asked to change the zoning on this property, uh, so it's consistent with, uh, the current piece that they have, which is PI, uh, and to add the residential to it. That's what you're doing. And you're correct. what you're doing. And you're correct, Lisa, that these other conditions, we can't really attach those to a zoning amendment. You know, they can promise to do certain things. I don't think you can condition approving this on the property staying tax exempt. That's not an appropriate condition to attach-
Property staying taxable?
Tax, correct.
You said tax exempt.
Stay, that's not an appropriate condition to attach to a piece of legislation. So if you approve this, then they can, and it sounds like they will, go to the Board of Assessment and ask that it be declared exempt. You have the right to participate in that and contest that. So, I mean, that's all part of your consideration in this, as is, you know, whatever the impacts are. I don't know that there's been other complaints about this particular property. They've been operating there for four years. You know, I'm not aware of that. But this, in terms of settlement and filing this, that's their call. We're not involved in their real estate transaction. Township's not involved in that. They filed a petition per the MPC. It went through the planning process. It's now in front of this board just for introduction. And then if you approve the introduction, it comes back to you for a final vote, yea or nay.
But there's no obligation for the township to change the zoning-
Correct.
-here or anyplace else?
Correct, purely discretionary.
Purely discretionary.
It's legislative, it's not judicial.
Ask you, if we don't change the zoning, and I gotta be honest with you, I'm not inclined to do so, what would you, what are, what are you going to wind up doing with the property?
Ultimately, if we can't get the map amendment, the only other option again would be to get some sort of a use variance from the zoning hearing board, assuming that that is not obtained, then we would have to maintain it as a single-family use. And just to provide a little bit of background in terms of why we've already closed on the property, this isn't the first time that we've been before this board. We were on, we were scheduled in, on January 6th, and this was just on the consent calendar. We were told to attend and that if there were any questions of the board regarding this rezoning request, that we'd be here to answer those questions. And when we came, it was on the consent calendar. There wasn't any discussion and it was recommended that this go to the Planning Commission for review. We did go to the Planning Commission for review. They reviewed it and they recommended approval of the map amendment, which is why we are now back here, because the next step would be for the Board of Commissioners to authorize a public hearing. So based on what had happened with the initial Board of Commissioners meeting and the feedback that we received that we can go ahead to the Planning Commission, that in part played also into the timeline and, and, you know, closing on the property. But again, that was mainly driven by the fact that the owners, the then owners, were eager for the school to, to close.
You've, you've kind of come, created a self-inflicted hardship. You're aware of that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And, and now you're just, you're seeking the relief from that.
Correct. And that, that is also a part of why we had decided not to pursue this as a use variance. But we do think in terms of looking at the property, its location, and the fact that the neighbors that the school had reached out to, and there have been a number of discussions with those neighbors, that does make sense that that parcel get rezoned and the school would do a lot of improvements there, I believe, to the property.
You know, with that, one grade would add how many more employees to? Because I'm concerned about traffic too on that road. And we do have traffic issues on Roberts Road as well as, I know that they're doing work on, is it Brenmore Avenue as well? Not that that has an effect, but there's always, we're always trying to repave a road or do construction. So how many more employees? You'd add six to seven students, pardon me, four to six, I guess, a teacher. What would be the total outcome?
We would expect it would be very marginal. It would potentially be two additional employees.
And currently, I believe all the school traffic is contained on site. If the rezoning does happen, we would be looking to perhaps slightly increase the parking that's available.
And you said you have about 54 students now or how many students?
Approximately 52 currently.
Fifty-two, and what percent are Radnor students?
I, I don't have the number. I know that some are. I don't have the exact number.
Okay, because you're making it seem that you would take students off the grid from Radnor Schools. And I'm just curious, is it 50%, 20% or is it just a low amount?
Unfortunately, I don't know the exact number. We can, we can come back to you with that number. I don't have it.
So, so right now, you're currently using the building as for, for your same purposes that you planned to get?
No, we are not.
You're not using it at all? So what, for the last four years, I'm confused. You said you've been using it for the last four years for what?
No, no, the mainline Classical Academy occupies the adjacent site.
Okay, you've been using that site for four years?
Correct, correct.
This site has been a single-family residence-
Correct.
-and has never been used by Classical Academy.
Correct.
So all of the use, all of that is, will be a new, a new use and connected with the change in the, in the, in the zoning map?
Correct.
And, and again, it's not an appropriate condition. We can't attach a condition that you sign an agreement not to file for an exemption. But if you agree on your own that you will not file for an exemption, you could propose that to us and that, that would make it more palatable probably. And so that's, that's what I would suggest you consider. Otherwise, it's, it's, I, I don't see how I, I could benefit my constituents in voting to change the zoning map.
We can certainly take that request regarding the taxes to the school board and have, and we can get back to the board on that, but aside from-
It's not a condition. You don't, you don't need to do anything. It's, you know, it's just something for you to consider.
Right, right. But in terms of the benefits, again, there were things that the adjacent neighbors have asked for in terms of stormwater, landscaping, you know, light shielding. And those are all things that they would get. There was also the concern about the shared driveway, which has been an existing condition that the school would also address. So there are benefits to the immediate neighbors that would come about if the school were to use-
Well, I think the point with that is the neighbors didn't care about getting it because it was a single-family residence. It's really, this is, that's really in connection. Now you're going to use it for a, it's not commercial, it's a school use. Now, now you would, typically, you would expect that you would do some things to, to shield it from the, from the neighbors. So I, I don't look at that as, as something that gets me over the line of why we should do this. It's just, that just comes with redevelopment. I think that that's typical. We ask, I mean, everybody does that. But the, the issues, the other issues are, as we said, I think you've, you've heard a concern that it is a, is a taxable parcel and removing it. I think that as a practical matter, we will have very little ability to stop if, if you use it from being an exempt parcel.
Hi there. Can I just jump in here? I think that there's probably a lot more discussion that needs to be had to make sure that we understand these issues better. I would ask to table this and this is in my ward. I would be happy to host a meeting so that we can get the neighbors together so that we, as the Board of Commissioners, can understand what the offers have been made to the neighbors and how they feel about it. It would allow you to get, you know, some thoughts around moving this project forward. I'm feeling now you're probably not going to get the support of the board as, as we're sitting here tonight. And I'd like to allow you some more time. Any-
Got a motion?
I hear a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes with five ayes, one nay, and one abstention from me. Okay, guys.
Who abstained?
I'm abstaining.
Okay.
No, it's an ancillary motion. We're tabling it. It'll come back and then there'll be public comment when they come back a second time. Thank you very much, guys.
If someone, I would ask if someone does have public comment, that they be allowed to make their comment. I mean, they came out. You'll make it at the end? Okay.
Moving on to, thank you, Sue. Moving on to item 4D, ordinance number 2019-15, introduction, amending the township zoning ordinance to allow townhouse developments in certain areas of the C3 service commercial district and to provide regulations therefor. Nick, deja vu all over again.
Everyone's seen this, I believe. John, do you want to give a summary or you want me to do it?
Well, this, this has been introduced previously. The property owner proposed a couple minor changes, which I believe Nick is ready to go through. So introduction again, it's going to go back through the planning process and it'll come back if the board approves this, I guess, at the end of next month or April.
Yeah, there were just three minor changes made. Just to give a little bit of the history, we had presented an ordinance. It was referred to Planning Commission. Planning Commission wanted a definition on what actually is permitted. And that's where this whole townhouse definition came about. So the Solicitor's Office drafted some amendments to include in this ordinance regarding basically defining townhomes. We went around on it and all we did, the only revisions made were basically for townhomes, we're saying that they're three dwelling units or more. We reduced the lot width for each townhouse from 30 feet to 20 feet. And there was some inconsistency on the side yard setbacks in that it said 25 feet aggregate, a minimum of 10, which is a standard code provision in our code. But then it said 25 feet from side yard to end unit. And there was some inconsistency there, so we took that out. So they were the three changes that have been made since the last time you saw this.
Is there any commissioner comment?
So what was the resolution, 25 feet?
To 10 feet.
So we no longer require that it be, the townhomes be 25 feet from any adjacent construction?
No, there, if you have a group of townhomes, there is a separation requirement. The provision initially read an aggregate of 25 feet, a minimum of 10, which means you get-
From the side, from the side yard.
From the side yards. But then there was a provision that also said 25 feet from the end unit. So there was some ambiguity there as to what are we referring to? Is it 10 feet or is it 25 feet? Our plan always had it as being 10 feet.
And that was actually going to be the question that I wanted to ask. We had a town hall meeting on this, which was pretty well attended. And my recollection is that you showed off plans of what you contemplated building at the time. Does this represent a change, probably an expansion in what you were building or is this just a correction to the language?
It's just a correction to the language. It's the same plan we've had from the very beginning.
So none of the residents who saw that plan should be surprised by what ultimately gets built as a result of this change in particular?
Correct. I mean, the ordinance base, what was presented initially in front of the residents is the same plan that we're still proposing. And the ordinance just matches those requirements.
So the 25 feet from the end unit would mean the, if you have a block of three or more townhomes, 25 feet would be from that end unit to an existing construction or 25 feet from two groups of three separate townhomes?
Let me, let me pull the ordinance. Okay, so currently, what it has is, we're required by this ordinance, you'll notice under I, where it says a townhouse development, we're required to comply with the requirements of 280-93. 280-93 subsection B states that no more than eight townhouses shall be attached in a single group. So again, we're talking about double groups. And each group of townhouses shall be separated from each other group by at least 20 feet. So there's 20 feet between groups-
Was it 25 or 20?
20.
And now, now we've revised that to 10?
No, no. There's a difference. You have group, there's only one group of townhomes in this development. All right? So it's not applicable to this development. But looking at the ordinance as a whole, you have two different provisions. One provision is side yard setback. The side yard setback's an aggregate of 25-
Or minimum of 10?
Minimum of 10.
So 15 and 10, 15 and one, 10 and the other?
And then you have a distance requirement if you did have groups of townhomes on one lot. There's a distance requirements. And that's the 20 feet that is currently in the code. That still applies here.
Okay. And you didn't object to that?
We didn't object to that.
So why are you raising it now then? Was it somebody else? Because we, because we, you corrected what our proposal was from our solicitor.
No. The proposal was not between groups of townhomes. The proposal, as I stated, if I pull out the old language, if I can find it here, in effect, what it said, the old language said side, between buildings, which you have in front of you, 25 feet aggregate, 10 feet minimum between buildings. And then it said 25 feet from property line for end units, which is inconsistent with the 10-foot minimum.
So it's just an inconsistency. It's not, it's not an issue of arguing where these are going to be and how close they're going to be to adjacent construction.
Right. It was an inconsistency in the ordinance that we felt that was-
And John, the inconsistency really was just an oversight, right? Or did you intend there to be 25 feet from the property line?
Well, I didn't draft it. It came out of the Planning Commission with Nick and the Planning Commission. And it came to, to me, to the board. We presented it to the board. So I'm, I'm not going to take authorship of it. This is Nick's baby.
Oh, no, no, no.
And Mary Everly's baby in the Planning Commission, so.
So we got fingers pointing at each other here.
I don't think it's significant.
But it's just an inconsistency. It doesn't change that plan. The lot size is the same. You know, once it was introduced last time and everybody took another look at it, those inconsistencies were obvious.
And that's what really happened. Once we introduced it, we didn't, to be honest, we, we had mentioned it before. We didn't pick up on it in the last ordinance. And so it was just an inconsistency that has since been corrected.
So here's my issue with it. It seems like somebody wanted to have 25 feet for the end units from the property line. And that would make sense to me, right? Because you would want to maximize the space between existing construction with respect to this new den, high-density townhome unit. So my concern is that somebody intended it to be 25 and that's what they wrote. And the inconsistency was with the 25 as a, as a, in combination. So how do we know that that wasn't the case?
Because the property owner proposed this ordinance. So the property owner can tell you what they intended. And Nick can tell you what was intended. This was not an ordinance generated by the township or the Planning Commission. It was-
Well, you said the Planning Commission commented. Was that one of their comments? To have the 25 feet from-
No, no, it wasn't.
What about the, the stormwater, Nick? This was, this has come before us before and I've indicated that the requirement to have no waiver from the infiltration requirement of the stormwater ordinance, to me, would be very important in allowing this change for C3 to include these townhomes. This is a very valuable, so some of the public will come up and tell us about the value. This is valuable to a developer to have it, right now, it's commercial and it's going to be allowed to be multifamily homes, which could potentially be a very valuable change to the developer. And in light of that, that's fine. People are allowed to make their money. I'm businessman. I, I want people to make their money. It's great. However, what I have a problem with is allowing a change and it's beneficial to others. And then we don't, we have them come in later and ask for a waiver from the stormwater. The, the stormwater requirements are very important in this township. And I'm told anecdotally that this stormwater problems are getting worse and worse in the township and that we need to do, my view was we should have a moratorium and not allow any new construction until we address the stormwater. However, that's not going to happen. That's not what I'm talking about. That's an aside. But in this case, I do think it's important that if we allow new use and increase the value of these properties, that we insist that we have compliance with our stormwater ordinance. So what's your comments on that, Counselor?
It would be, you would be drawing a differentiation then between someone who wanted to develop it commercially and someone who wanted it residential.
Yes, it would. Yes, it would. Because there's a change in zoning that's being requested. That's the, it's, there's a differentiation by the applicant to me because I don't need to, we don't need to change anything.
But, but someone can come in and develop this more expansively as a commercial development, even have more impervious coverage. And actually, our ordinance reduces the impervious coverage requirement over, or on- requirement over or under what is currently required in this zoning district.
This requires 60% maximum. What's, what would be the other?
We went down, we reduced it, I think it was 65 or 70 is what the-
Right. But I, I understand, and that's great. But it's really a matter of keeping the stormwater on the site. That's what's important, to stop the flooding problems that we have. So that's what the infiltration requirement-
Yeah. We're not going to be any different than anyone else who comes before this board for stormwater. I don't know if it infiltrates. I don't.
Well, one of the, one of the representatives here, she said that it didn't perk there.
I don't, yeah, I know.
She said that, at the, at the-
I don't, I don't think she said that. I think she said-
I'm pretty sure she did.
They hadn't done the study. Yeah, I'm not-
No, she said it did not perk. It's, it's low, it's low land. It's close to the creek there. It's, I wouldn't be surprised if it doesn't perk.
That's a little bit higher. That, I believe, that, that side's higher.
Well, that side, yeah, but this is the whole area. So this is the whole block, really, it applies to. So.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment? The one thing that I'll add is that we had a large meeting. It is a badly blighted little area of a couple of houses. And the residents had questions. They had concerns, as you'd expect that they would, but in general, I think that I can say the meeting was very positive. Nobody left kicking and screaming. I think a lot of people there said that they wanted to see development at that site to change it, and that this was not necessarily inconsistent with what they wanted. Does anybody here who wants to amplify that or disagree with that on behalf of the public? I'm going to kick it to staff first and then to public. So any staff comment?
Well, for, for the Commissioners, I think that residential uses would be understandable with the locality, rather than a new commercial use. It's less, presumably less traffic. It could be, it could be less noise, and I understand that. So I, I don't, I understand why the neighbors would prefer to have this go to residential as opposed to a new automotive shop or something, which could be there.
I've spoken with landowners in that area with whom I have longstanding relationships. They are interested in it. They are supportive of it. But at the same time, there are concerns around traffic. There are concerns around stormwater. I am friends with an individual that owns several properties on that block, and, you know, they, they have the concerns, but I, I think they're being addressed. I think that the meeting helped a lot, and they just want to be sure that they're adhered to through the process.
Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment?
Susan Stern, 202 Midland. I have two quick comments. One actually pertains to this specifically. If you're going to promulgate new regulations, there's nothing that would preclude the Board of Commissioners from adding in a stipulation of stronger stormwater management for this zoning. You know, there are other zoning districts that have special regulations. They were created at the time that the zoning districts were created and written, and since it seems to be taking a while to get around to updating the stormwater ordinance as a whole, this might be an opportunity to bring something in, you know, given those particular concerns in, in that zoning district. And there is nothing that precludes you from doing that. The only other comment I have is, is a quick request. There's a fairly large number of members in the audience who are here about item J. If the board would respectfully consider bringing that further up on the agenda, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to say let's finish comment on this, and then I'll put it to the board if we can move that up. Is there any additional public comment?
Just, just one.
One quick comment. Currently, remember, there is no stormwater management on this site. This will be treated as a new site. It will have to comply with whatever requirements the township has. As I mentioned, it is a reduction over what is currently there as to the requirement for stormwater.
But again, that's, what the issue is, is that they're not, seek a waiver, right? Everyone is, the stormwater applies to everyone, and I agree, we shouldn't write new, more stringent stormwater for this particular zoning change. However, I think it's perfectly appropriate to insist that we comply with what everyone has to comply with as far as infiltration. So that's, that's my point. No, no response necessary. Thank you, though, Nick. I know. Ms. Tamola would like to speak.
Cheryl Tamola, 411, Midland Avenue. 411 Midland Avenue. Okay. I just want to know, what's this going to be zoned now?
It's going to allow for townhomes in the, in the commercial.
I know. But there is a zoning map.
I'm going to kick your question over to Nick, just because we're not really in a good situation to do feedback, question and answer here, public comment. So if you wanted to ask Nick, then he could certainly answer for you.
Nick? Hi, Nick.
Yeah, this is currently zoned C3. As you may know, in that area already has extensive residential development. The proposal here is the old swimming pool company there, and the proposal is for townhomes. How many, is it?
I know what it is. I'm saying, what is it going to be zoned now?
No, no, it's just an amendment to the zoning code permitting townhomes in the C3 district if the townhomes are located more than 450 feet from an arterial, which is Lancaster Avenue. So it's limited to C3, more than 450 feet. There was a map, actually, that indicated the area affected here, which is that area basically on North Aberdeen.
Right, right.
Okay.
How many townhomes, sorry? Nick? Nick?
Greg, how many?
Six, six, six.
Okay, so, so just as a side comment, this is the second time tonight that things have been rezoned kind of ad hoc. And I don't think that's the way to do things. When I was on the Planning Commission a long time ago, there was actual procedure for if you wanted to rezone something. And this, this is kind of like backdoor rezoning. Really, the way it should be done is you should address the whole plan of the township or at least areas with a hearing and whatever. It's not just a caveat, like, okay, we're going to just call this this and do something else. I'm just mentioning, it's like bad land use planning. Thank you.
Just in response, Cheryl.
This has been, like, on several months. It's been before planning. It's been before this board. It's been going around for a long time. It's not just a-
I, I think your point is that it should be holistic, rather than a specific carve-out for this particular, based on 450 from it, from arterial.
It's a very bad thing.
Understood. Take your point there.
Is there any additional public comment?
And Sherry Wayne. That's strange. So the board, in response to a question during public comment, won't answer the question, defers the person coming to the lectern to speak to the person's attorney directly in front of the board. Where's that procedure authorized? I'm just learning new things about board procedure every single night. What I do know is that in Radnor's charter, the public during public comment is allowed to make public comment and question the board. The board speaks to the constituents. If a resident has a question for somebody's attorney, who you know is paid to zealously advocate the represent, or the position of his client, as opposed to, I don't know, a bunch of elected officials, that person can do that on their own time. But I've never heard of a procedure before where somebody during public comment asks a question about an agenda, and the response from the chair is, well, we're just going to have you ask your questions directly to the person's lawyer. I have a feeling that that procedure was pulled out of the same place that Mr. Larkin has come up with the opening public comment. In other words, nowhere. That's not appropriate. You don't have meetings run that way, just like you don't have this ad hoc spur-of-the-moment zoning decisions. Have procedures in place and be consistent about that. Because that was embarrassing. We are not supposed to have people who come before this board and have reasonable questions about an agenda topic. By the way, as an aside, I always agree with Ms. Tamola. In fact, I rarely do. But that's never happened before. Take it up with the lawyer of the person who, who's come here tonight. I mean, come on.
moderate your tone, Mr. Sherry.
Whoa, Mr. Larkin, stop whimpering. Thanks.
Jack, I didn't get to answer my questions, because you went right into without asking. So I have a couple more questions for Nick.
Sorry, Sean.
So you said there's six, there'd be six new townhomes?
Correct.
How much parking would each of the townhomes have?
It would have two parking spaces per unit, so I believe it'd be 12. Greg?
It'll, it'll have two, two, two-car garage plus parking space behind each home, plus we are cutting out kind of the front of the property, so there could be street parking as well.
So that's street parking would be-
Open to whomever.
Open to, so you'd be, so it'd be a net gain of parking, equal or?
Correct. Right now, there is no-
Of, not of parking from the condo, obviously. They're going to go there first, but when they have visitors, and then how would that affect stuff like school buses and fire trucks?
So currently, the, currently people, there's really not a cutout from the curb to park off of the street cartway? That's what we're going to be providing.
So I don't think the question was, the answer is, are you going to have more parking necessary from this than there currently is from the commercial? Sounds like there is, although you're saying that, that there is two parking spaces within each unit. So we're talking about on-street. Is it going to be more of a burden, less of a burden, or equal to the?
No, we're creating more, we're creating more on-street parking spots, taking it out of the property and making parallel parking spots, which don't exist today.
Is there any additional Commissioner questions or public comment? It's kind of a free-for-all now. Okay. Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Vote passes, what is that, five to two, with Commissioners Farhi and Booker saying nay. Moving on to item E, resolution number 2020-24. Oh, sorry, we were going to ask, how does the board feel, just to get a sense, moving up the Wawa vote?
I'm okay doing that, but I would ask just that we respond to Mr. Sherry's question about high-public official exemption from speaking on an item. I sent that to you. Do you have any comment on that?
Well, no, I don't, and I'm not going to answer Mr. Sherry's questions. He can call me. He, you know, I'm here every Thursday.
Mr. Sherry.
And, and-
Mr. Sherry.
And he can-
Mr. Sherry.
Mr. Sherry, you're out, you're out of order again.
Mr. Sherry.
And, and he can send me his legal research, which he hasn't done yet. So, you know, I'm well aware of the doctrine of a high-public official.
And, and it could, could apply here. You agree?
No.
No?
That's a defamation claim. You know, the agreement that you signed with the former manager, you can bind yourself by contract. So, but if Mr. Sherry wants to have the discussion about it, you know, let him do what any other attorney would do, and give me a call, or come and meet and talk with me. And I would like to get what he sent to all the board members, because he didn't have the courtesy to copy me on any of it.
This is not an issue that's on our agenda.
This is what the email said.
Mr. Sherry, no.
Mr. Rice just insinuated that I didn't send it.
Mr. Sherry.
I asked the board to ask Mr. Rice about the topic. It's in the email.
Mr. Sherry, you need to sit down, or we need to adjourn.
Mr. Rice is not my lawyer.
Point of order, point of order. Point of order.
I think, I think that's correct. It needs to come from us asking, asking the question. So I, I think that that's right, that we must ask you.
Mr. Sherry, you, you need to either stay in your seat or you need to leave. It comes down to that. If there's not an issue, if it's not public comment, you can't just run up and seize the microphone.
Commissioner Larkin, kindly do not badger the guests that-
Commissioner?
It freezes, it freezes, it freezes.
Mr. Booker. Mr. Booker. Mr. Booker, your microphone is off. Please stop.
That chills public.
Moving back to the issues that are on the agenda for tonight. Is there anyone who would object if we moved up the Wawa vote? Hearing no objections, I'm going to move to item J. We're taking this out of order. Item J, Wawa authorization for solicitor to file appeal of common pleas court decision of January 30th, 2020. Is there any Commissioner comment?
Go ahead. Yeah, I, I would just urge at this time that the board vote for the appeal. We do not have, unless we, as a Board of Commissioners, ask for the appeal from the Delaware County Circuit Court, we do not have that judge's decision. By filing this appeal and asking for this appeal, we then get that opinion and can take next steps. I remain, as I've said, opposed to the current plans in terms of the Wawa at Lancaster Avenue and Aberdeen. And I would urge Commissioners to vote as such, so that we have this written opinion from Delaware County Circuit Court.
I'm, I'm going to support this as well. However, what I will say is that the Wawa is a relatively small inconvenience when compared with something giant, like 200, like 475,000 square feet at the Penn location, which was in my neighborhood, which Ms. Stern, among others, supported the Penn doing that. I'm going to support Ms. Stern and the neighbors because I understand how they feel about something that they feel is an encroachment on their neighborhood. And I get that. However, this, as you, as you all know, there's gas stations on the site. Their lawyer claims that this is already a by-right site, and we've already lost at the lower level. So just so you, you all know that. We lost already. You're asking us to appeal, and I think you're going to get the, the votes to appeal, and I'm going to support it. However, when we look at the grand scheme of things, when we look at the CICD, when we look at the PLO zoning overlay, and we look at the massive intrusion on neighborhoods in other locations, in my area especially, this is a much smaller intrusion. Nonetheless, and, and, and some of you didn't support me in, in these prior dealings. So I'm just pointing that out, that I'm going to support this, the group here. I understand the issues. I do think that this is a much more sympathetic developer than a large sophisticated business where, that has billions of dollars in endowment. But I recognize the issue, but you do realize that this is an uphill battle. Our Solicitor Rice believes that our position is more likely than not we prevail on, on appeal. I don't think everyone shares that, but I'm willing to take, take the time and support the neighbors in doing that, because I think it's the right thing for all of the people at Radnor. And I would ask in the future, when, when I have one in the seventh, in the second ward, that we get the same kind of support. Thank you.
So acknowledged, and we appreciate your support.
Do you mind, Mr. Farhi? Thank you. So I will be voting to support this, because I do believe that the, it would be interesting to see what the judge has to say about this. But what I most would like to say, Commissioner Booker, you just chastised our chair for freezing out the public during public, excuse me, do not interrupt.
I didn't chastise anyone.
Do not interrupt me.
I didn't chastise anyone.
Do not interrupt me, Mr. Booker.
I'm responding. I did not chastise.
You did, you chastised our board chair for interrupting someone who was out of order in speaking public comment, and you said that that was a way to freeze out the public during public comment.
It is.
Yet you just called out by name residents who did not agree with you on an issue. You called them out by name from the dais. That is equally as bad and exactly the same thing. And I would ask that if you are going to chastise others, that you would please live by the same rules. Thank you.
It's not. She's named person in, as an intervener. It's absolutely not the same thing.
Commissioner Booker, enough. It's enough. You're out of order. Enough.
It's not, it's not the same thing. She's a named person. She's in the, she's in the packet. It's a named person. It's absolutely different.
I'll say that I think it's such a bad precedent. I've said this before, to let any commercial entity or institutional entity have more rights than our residents. And I think that's been an ongoing issue, an ongoing theme, at least since I've stepped on, that we live here, we pay taxes, we raise our kids, we die here. And any entity with more money than us and more lawyers than us seems to get to do what they want, and they seem to bulldoze us. So, you know, I don't want to, I'm not trying to point names. I've seen it at least on my end, in my ward, which, before I stepped on. So anything to help the neighbors and to help the residents, and hopefully we're, we can, residents and neighbors can get their, their town back. I would, I'd vote for that. Thanks.
I, I too will join my colleagues in supporting the neighbors, um, and will vote to send the solicitor. Um, not sure where it ends, but, um, you know, I think this is the right thing to do, and, and, um, you know, continue to keep that neighborhood feel for, for the area down there by, uh, um, by the church in, in Lancaster. Last comment, um, you know, I'll just say that this meeting, I apologize to the residents here in the audience, I apologize to those listening on TV. This is an embarrassment, and the decorum shown on this board is, I believe, gone to a new low. So hopefully, we can address that and, um, do some inner thinking, and, and hold ourselves to higher standards in the future.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment?
Well, I just wanna make the point, filing the appeal does not preclude any subsequent actions to resolve the matter, uh, outside of getting a final adjudication of the matter, in, in my mind, at least with my vote.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment? Hearing none, is there any staff comment? Hearing none, is there any public comment?
The aforementioned Ms. Stern. Um, I'd like to thank the board for supporting this appeal. Yes, I am actively opposing this, uh, development, and I feel that, um, you know, really, landowner, uh, rights, um, the public process has really been, um, circumvented in this event. I, I do just wanna make a little comment. I actually spent eight years on the planning commission, and actively fought and protected the, uh, PL, PLO from being 916,000 square feet of development. So I'm actually quite proud of the work that I did opposing that. And Mr. Booker and I have some common ground. We both believe that it should not be, uh, the new PLO should not be above the railroad tracks. Uh, I think that all the development that's allowed should be below the railroad tracks, because the bridge is an issue. So we have areas where we agree on that, and areas where we don't. Um, but I'm glad that it's not 960,000 square feet of development. Um, thank you very much for supporting the Wawa vote.
Is there any additional public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Susan, it couldn't have been 916,000. That was not, never allowed in PLO. Changing it allowed more, more square footage.
Moving on to item 4E, resolution number 2020 dash 24, authorizing repairs for the township-owned cow barn on Wheeler Field at Ardrossen, paid for by insurance. Is there any Commissioner comment?
Yeah, yeah, let me just, just go, 'cause this is not my ward. Um, if, I don't know, Steve, or, or, um, sorry, or Steve, one of the Steve's, or Lisa can at least tell me, I've never seen it, like, what it is. If insurance is gonna pay for it, it's fine. I think it's an easy vote. I looked in the packet, I didn't really see too much.
It's the aluminum shed that's on the, the, um, the Wheeler Field, so the, the pasture on Darby Paley Road.
Oh, yeah, I know that.
The pasture where, um, the cows normally are.
Mm-hmm.
Um, right at, kind of like the intersection of, uh, Sawmill and Darby Paley. There's the field, leads up to the Boy Scout cabin. There's that big kind of aluminum barn there. It sustained a lot of damage. I forget when that was. Steve, what, which storm was that?
October 31st.
Okay.
The windstorm.
The windstorm we had, yeah.
We bought the property, we bought the building.
Yeah.
Insurance taken care of.
The building is ours.
And it houses cows? It houses bovine?
No, it actually holds the hay for the cows.
Okay.
And that's why we need the roof back on it.
Okay.
So that's why they need to repair it. A lot of the aluminum has come off, and the hay isn't, it, it can't be preserved.
It gets fed, yeah, no, it gets fermented.
Is there a deductible on the insurance claim?
The, yeah, for this claim, it's a thousand dollars.
So if, if there weren't cows there, and this happened, we would just demolish it and not, just not spend a thousand dollars, correct?
Uh, I would think that if there were no cows there, we would not need the shed to hold the hay that feeds the cows, yes. But the cows are there.
My question is, why are we coming out of pocket a thousand dollars, even a thousand?
It's our, we have an obligation under the, the agreement with the, the farmer, that the, the shed is there, and it houses the hay for the cows.
But we don't, there's no monetary payment from the, from the farmer to the township for the use of that field, correct?
Nor is there any expense on the township side for maintaining the field.
Why doesn't he split the 500 with us?
'Cause we own the building.
Split the five, split the thousand, 500 each.
I would imagine that if we were to demolish that, it would cost more than a thousand dollars. I mean, it's sort of, it either needs to be repaired or taken down. There's a use for it. Um, demolition would be higher than the deductible. Steve?
I, I would say yes, to get rid of all the materials, clear the site.
Seems like a no-brainer, really. It's a thousand dollars.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment?
Sarah Pillling, are there any plans for the, long-range plans for the use of this building, other than to store the hay for the current cows?
I hear what you're saying. Um, I'm gonna refer you back to what I said before. We really can't do a back-and-forth. I'm gonna cite you to...
It's not just asking the question, putting it out into the atmosphere. Is there any long-use, long-range use for this building?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no additional public comment, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes six to zero, with Commissioner Underly off the dais. Moving on to resolution number 2020 dash 25, request to purchase two Harley-Davidson police motorcycles. Is there any Commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment?
Yeah, I had a question. What, what was the cost of those? And is that in the budget?
Thirty, thirty-seven-five is what we're saying, right?
And zip down to item F.
Yeah, the, the budget included, um, I wanna say either forty or fifty thousand. So it looks like we're well under that.
It's thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. It's in the resolution.
Does that include everything, like the lights, the, everything? All the bells and whistles?
Yes, the, for the total amount, the budget, this is for the purchase price of the physical vehicle. There will be what they call an outfit, and we will remain in the budget, uh, as, as placed as a holder for the 2020 capital.
Okay, so it's another thousand for the decals, the, et cetera, et cetera?
That, that is correct.
Why not just do it all at one time? Do we not know the price, and we need to buy it, execute it ahead of time, or?
The, uh, there's different opportunities with the size of the vendors. These are so specific that they don't do a one-stop shop, so we have to actually drop them around. So there'll be individual, individual, uh, bills for that respective service. One would be the outfitter for the lights, the other would be the outfitter for the, uh, the stickers.
So in this case, you're buying the units, and then taking them to a separate vendor to put on lights and units. That, so that necessitates a separate appropriation and approval for each, for these things?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Chief, Chris, sorry. Two quick questions. How old are the current vehicles now?
These are 2013s.
Okay, and how many miles do they have on them?
Uh, M2 has 34, 655, and M1 has 18, 509. And then the trade-in value is approximately six and five thousand dollars, six for the lower mileage, five for the other one, and that will come back, uh, to the township, to the general fund.
Does it, it doesn't sound like we're getting that much for trade-in. Would it make sense to keep them?
I think right now, we stick with the plan that we have. Um, we are gonna have other opportunities in the future, uh, to take a look at that, but right now, we only have limited space, and the unit runs well the way it is.
Sure. It just seems, you know, I don't know, is 18,000 miles, is that a small amount for a motorcycle, or?
It's, it, they're 18,000 hard miles.
Okay.
These get a lot of standing runtime, and they're also put under very strenuous conditions that most motorcycles aren't. Several of these had two to three clutches replaced because of the type of riding that occurs.
I know one died in my driveway, so, yeah. Okay.
Chris, just a point. How many motorcycles will we have after these two and the trade-in? Will it only be the two, or is there more than that?
We have four units, sir.
Four, and this will make six? Or this, this will keep four?
Keep it at four. The, the two, the six and five thousand, once, once those other units are fully in service, then the existing motorcycles will be, uh, the lights will be taken off, and then they'll be given to the dealer as a trade-back.
Why not put those lights on the new ones? All right, forget it, forget it. I, I just, do, why do we need motorcycles in Radnor? Is that, I mean, aren't motorcycles for a highway? Do we need that? And, so I'm just trying to get, I wanna understand your, your process. So why do we need motorcycles as opposed to cars?
Every time we use a motorcycle, it's, it's between 40 to 48, um, gallons per mile. So it's very cost-effective every time we have the motorcycles in service. So they're extremely cost-effective. For traffic details, special incidents, they're highly maneuverable. I mean, I could go on and on, I could talk about this for an hour. They're hi- highly maneuverable, they're adjuncts to our police corps. Um, we've actually pushed off the replacement of the highway, the unit that rides, it's the highway patrol unit. Um, we have pushed back the replacement of their regular police sedans by two years, um, because the motorcycles eat up a lot of the mileage. So every time we use them, they're very, it's very cost-effective in itself, plus the maneuverability and special patrol features.
Well, why not use, why not have more of them then? Instead of just four?
I'm sure he'd be fine with that.
He would order them tomorrow with board approval, so I...
I mean, if you wanna replace cars with motorcycles, I have no problem with that. That's, that's my question, so.
As you know, our stor, our storms and everything create challenges, so having a diverse fleet, which we do, uh, allows us a lot of opportunities.
Commissioner Malrooney was gonna say something. She happens to ride, so.
I was gonna bring up the point, that you, you don't wanna ride them in the rain, so, um, you need a car, as well as a motorcycle.
Okay. Um, is there any additional Commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment?
Good evening. Michael Lake, fourth. Um, I don't wanna pick on the police, it just so happens that the big-ticket items on today's agenda happen to be police. Um, I kind of agree with Commissioner Booker and Commissioner Farhi. I don't really understand the value of motorcycles over vehicles. Motorcycles are dangerous, they're loud, and as I understand it, they add a liability to the insurance policy of the township. So I'm trying to understand, you know, besides parades and, and, uh, events in Wayne, why won't bicycles or mountain bikes, and a combination of mountain bikes and cars, work? Um, Commissioner Malrooney pointed out the rain, you also have the winter, you also have the ice. Uh, I don't think it's, personally, I don't think it's a safe alternative and a, a good, good, uh, use of township funds. Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to resolution number 2020 dash 26, approving the purchase of 18 new rifles for use by the Radnor Township Police Department. Chris, could you lead us in?
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, police departments worked on a two-year project, uh, to replace our current, uh, tactical rifles, um, which are approximately 20-plus years old. They're Bushmaster rifles, and we would like to replace them with, um, the same weapon, the same duty weapon we carry, which is known as a Sig Sauer. I have Lieutenant Pino here, who has a, a vast knowledge of the technical capability, and has been part of a selection team, uh, to purchase that. Uh, but this would, this would keep our equipment at a high standard, and, uh, with the most performance factor. These, these also are in our patrol vehicles. These, these rifles are on the street every day, in our patrol cars. They're not something that are remotely mounted. Uh, they are with the officers and, uh, available for use at a moment's, a second's notice.
Are there any questions or comments by the board?
Uh, what, just, just one. We, we did have something similar a few months ago, so is this the second tranche of new rifles, or is this just a follow-up on our, our one from a few months ago?
It's just a follow-up, Commissioner. In fact, the, it, and the bid is in, in your packet. It separates the $5,000 that the board was gracious enough to put on hold from last year's budget, and the remainder, um, comes from this year's budget. And the reason we did that is because it's so hard to get the order in, it's gonna take so long to get them in. We at least were authorized to hold the order to put it in, and hoping that you would go ahead and move forward from this point with the rest of the funds.
So the number's 18, not 36, is my question?
That, that is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Um, so you answered my question, worth 20 years old. I, I assume that not a lot of rounds get put through these, obviously, but you do practice with them? Am I correct?
Uh, yes, sir. I, we qualify, every officer qualifies at least twice a year. Um, that excludes our, our SWAT officers, whose rifles, um, get considerable more use. Um, but it's, it's like anything else. There's, there's a shelf life, they're hard miles.
Sure.
They, I, they, they sit in the cars, they get banged around, and, uh, it, quite frankly, in my opinion, it's time for an upgrade as well.
Sure. No, I think 20 years is, would, would make sense. Um, is there a, a learning curve with this new firearm versus the, versus the old one, or not?
Absolutely not. It functions the exact same way. Uh, as you are probably aware, the, the platform is exactly the same. Um, there's, there's literally no difference at all.
Okay. And then I had one or two, um, residents ask me, and I'll just ask you. Um, I guess you, you trade these in? Do they get destroyed? Are they trade-in 'cause of the whole...
Well, to trade them in is, is the only way that we will get financial back for them. Um, it has been the, the township's position in the past, and I can only assume it'll be the position going forward, but would either be up to you guys and girls, ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, um, that we could sell them to a supplier that can make sure they would only go to a law enforcement agency, or we would not, I could ever foresee, sell them to individuals. That's not something that I, we've done in the past, and I can see us moving forward doing that. To get them destroyed would clearly be an option, but we would lose significant buyback revenue in, in turning them in.
No, I, I, and I totally get that, I totally understand that. Um, but as long as you're saying that from the dealer that you're gonna turn them in for trade-in, they'll keep them within law enforcement, and they won't go out to the general public, to the best of your knowledge.
To, to the best of my knowledge, yes, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just be a, a, a strong voice of support for this. Um, our first responders in this township are no different than first responders anywhere else in the country. Um, just as we say on the fireside, it's not an if or when, um, large fire and disaster strikes. Um, I, I think it's not an if or when, um, that our officers will need, um, the best technology, um, and ensure that they are properly armed to deal with situations. Um, so I'm, I'm a strong supporter of this. 20 years seems like it's, um, a, a long time in terms of replacement for our first responders.
Is there any additional public, uh, Commissioner comment? Hearing none, is there any staff comment? Hearing none, is there any public comment? I think I got duped there. Okay, I will then call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 4H, resolution number 2020 dash 29, authorizing the president of the Board of Commissioners, or the acting township manager and finance director to execute all documents and agreements related to the multimodal transportation fund grant for the construction of intersection improvements at King of Prussia Eagle and Pine Tree Roads. I will lead us in on this.
Move, we hope, move, Commissioner Larkin, move, we move this to, uh, new business? This was voted on previously, and, uh, failed, for lack of a majority?
Um, I don't see a reason to move it to mo- new business. Is there a consensus to do so? Not hearing one, let's, let's deal with it now. I'll lead us in, like I said. So, Com- So, Commissioner Booker is correct, this is something that we discussed at the previous meeting, and, uh, because Commissioner Underlee was not present, we split three to three. This is a, uh, traffic improvement for which we have significant funding from both Cabrini and Eastern Colleges. We've entered into a number of agreements with them, and we are now looking to get additional grant funds in order to follow through on those agreements. Um, it borders, uh, or it is rather divided between my ward and Commissioner Booker's ward. There were a couple of different commissioners who asked to bring this back for today's meeting because there was not a final decision by the board, at least in the sense that we did not have a clear majority one way or another. It was a three-to-three split. Which, I guess today means it's going to be Damian's decision, so, he's the decider. Rich has talked to me about this issue in the past, and he's raised a couple of parliamentary issues in the past. I've looked into this, and I don't agree with some of the parliamentary issues that he has raised. What I will say is, I do have concerns, uh, about the substance of bringing back something that was previously addressed by the board. I think that it makes for bad government to bring something back again and again in hopes that maybe this time we'll get a majority, and maybe this time we'll ma, we'll get a majority, and maybe this time we'll get a majority. What I'll say is that this was an issue that, number one, was requested by a number of commissioners, so to some extent, we don't have a choice. Our charter says that we are required to bring it back, because commissioners have asked for it. The second issue is, for me, this is something that is certainly important enough that, I didn't step on anybody else when they requested it, and as I led with, I'm actually one of the people who asked for it. The reason that I say that it is as important as I think that it is, is because, number one, it will provide some traffic relief at an intersection, which is already bad, I believe. I hear, I hear exactly what Commissioner Booker says, to kind of teleport to the future and the past, I guess, because I've heard it before and I'm sure I'll hear it again. Making the road more inviting may invite more traffic. I hear that, but the road is problematic now, and we need to address that now, because this is the situation that we're living with. I'm not sure that we're going to have the issues with traffic that are being presaged, because most of the traffic that's going to be coming in the future will, for better or for worse, probably be coming off of four seventy-six and stopping at the Penn Development. There may be some coming from the other divestion, other direction, but I don't foresee that being the larger issue. Regardless, the, um, the traffic improvement that we have there is going to be favorable for the pedestrians, the students who are in the area, and more, more than anything else, I feel like we can't break faith with the two colleges. Particularly when we have commissioners who rail about the fact that there are some colleges and universities in the neighborhood who are unwilling to provide funding for these kinds of improvements. We've got that commitment from Cabrini and Eastern, we can't leave them hanging, in my opinion. So that's my background on the issue. I think you probably know which direction I'm going. I'll be quiet now.
So, I, I will be honest, I was new to this issue, um, and didn't have a, a lot of background in terms of what this board had previously, uh, voted on. Did not have the background in terms of what Cabrini and Eastern, um, were bringing to the table, uh, in terms of this project. What I did have, um, was four years of firsthand experience dealing with the intersection of King of Prussia, um, and Eagle, um, Pine Tree, uh, on one side. Uh, and that is because when I moved back here with my wife and girls in two thousand twelve, we lived at the intersection of Upper Gulf and Pine Tree. What I experienced on a daily basis, um, there, um, and still experienced to a large degree, uh, in responding as a firefighter, um, is a high-traffic, high-congestion area, where frequently, there are, um, motorists that are trying to pass each other on both right shoulders, um, motorists that are going up onto embankments to get around each other while they wait, um, for people making left turns at that intersection. And I've experienced the backups and the tie-ups there from multiple, multiple accidents, uh, that happen on, on a frequent bas, basis. So when I, um, availed myself of this plan and dug into it, um, it seems only wise, um, that we proceed with this, because we have commitments, uh, as Commissioner Larkin pointed out, from Eastern and Cabrini, to try and deal with a, um, high-density, um, high-volume, um, and, um, traffic incident, uh, intersection, which, um, as you pointed out, is only going to be compounded, probably, by Penn Medicine. So, um, I will be voting in favor of this.
I'd like to at least address what you said, Jack. You are correct, I did change my, my, my opinion on this, and you said one thing that was telling it the less, meaning that this probably would add more traffic to that intersection. I do believe I, I heard you say that. The issue that I have is, it's going to add more traffic. So, we're going to fix something, we have a situation that's bad, the universities chip in, they fix thirty, forty percent of it, and now we have a whole set of new problems and a whole set of a lot more traffic. Um, and then, what happens there? So, it's, you know, it's a Band-Aid on a bullet hole, you're not fixing the problem, you're making it a little better, only for it to get worse. And, that's what I've seen, if you want to talk about what some of these nonprofit institutions do, is they create a set of problems, they fix a little bit, and then it gets bad and they go, oh, well, we did what we had to do. I believe that this sets a bad precedent. I know that you touched upon it, um, do we revote on everything that doesn't go our way? Um, you know, we have the majority here, I, I will not be voting with the majority, but, um, so I don't feel comfortable, um, doing that, or maybe it may come out to my advantage or someone's advantage if, if that happens, where we don't get the votes. And then finally, um, I just don't like how this reads, um, authorizing the President of the Board to act. And, to me, it just sounds that we're voting on someone to act unilaterally, mainly the President of the Board or be the Vice President if they didn't sign. So, I don't know, I'm sure it's legal, I'm sure it's been vetted through the attorney and everything, but just how it, it reads, um, I mean, I guess we're always authorizing you, or is there a special exception of why we're authorizing you? But, it's neither here nor there, it just, it doesn't read well with me and it doesn't sit well with me, so...
I can speak to that last issue. Any grant application has to be signed on behalf of the township, like most of the other documents that I get. These are things that the President has to sign, Lisa signed it before me, so you authorized me to sign in this instance. If Lisa were the President, you would authorize Lisa to sign, if you were the President, we'd authorize you to sign, that's...
What, so what's different than the last vote? Just that we have a full majority and you can pass?
We have all seven people here.
So, in theory, as long as you have three people saying, "Bring this up, bring this up," we could bring up anything that keeps failing time and time and time again. I, I guess, what is the, the, not precedent, but what is the rule of, it can go one time or two times, or Robert's Rules of, where, you know, in, enough is enough, at least on a...
So according to Robert's Rules of Order, if there's a fifty-fifty tie, then it's decided in the direction that the Chair votes. I voted in favor of it last time there was a fifty-fifty tie, which means that it passed last, uh, time.
Actually, I disagree with that. You cited me, you, you cited me the provision, but...
According to a strict interpretation of Robert's Rules, we, of course, don't do that here. Our charter provides that a commissioner can put any item on any agenda, which means you say if three people want it, it doesn't matter if it's three, if one person wants it. One person says, "I want to vote on the same thing over and over again," it is something that is obviously ripe for abuse. I get that. What I'm telling you is that in this case, this is an issue that was important enough that a number of people asked for this to come back, and I was one of them, for the reasons that I gave. Parenthetically, I don't believe that I said, and certainly if I did, I will clarify now, I don't necessarily believe that this will cause greater traffic in the future. That is speculation. I don't know that to be the case.
Can I ask for a clarification on that one point? I was going to come back to that, I'm sorry if I interrupted you. Commissioner, are you done with your, can we come back to that, though? Because I'm not understanding how...
So, I mean...
How is, how is increased safety going to add more traffic?
So, there are traffic engineers who have said, in various venues, that I've heard them say it, that if you make a road more attractive to traffic, by putting in the appropriate signalizations, the appropriate lanes, everything else, that's where traffic will go. You don't see the same number of cars on King of Prussia Road that you see on four seventy-six. And the reason why is both because, you know, four seventy-six goes where you want to go, but it's also because four seventy-six has a whole lot more lanes, there's no traffic signals there, you can just get on there and cruise.
Understood, okay.
Now, the fact that it may generate additional traffic because it becomes more attractive does not mean that it necessarily will. That general principle does not mean that you automatically, it's not like a magnet that sucks cars to that signal.
We're, we're, we're not adding two extra lanes, you know? We're, we're not adding...
We are, actually, we're adding, adding additional lanes.
But, but, but not all the way up and down King of Prussia?
No, but left and, left and right turn lanes. Right.
Damian, I mean, you all know the shortcuts to work, where, what has a favorable light? Um, you know, you know how to skirt the back neighborhoods, and, um, you know, I have family that lives on Gulf Creek, uh, friends that live on Pine, on, on, uh, Pine Tree, and, those are, you know, I mean, Gulf Creek is a nasty road, anyone that knows that, that is a nasty, nasty road, and to, you know, funnel more traffic that, that direction, I mean, if, and I don't know, we, we don't know what the case is going to be, you know, having thought about it twice and, and thinking about it and thinking, uh, a little bit more clearly, yeah, I did, I did change, uh, how I thought.
Okay, I, I understand your point on more traffic, uh, but, but I'll come back to my point of, we're, we're not adding two extra lanes between, um, you know, uh, the high school and, um, you know, whatever the right turn is down at, um, in, in Upper Marion for, for the mall. What we're talking about is adding turn lanes, and back to my point, what I saw there and observed for four years that I lived in that neighborhood and still observe, um, i, is that the lack of left and right turn lanes is forcing people to make really, really bad decisions, and motorists are going to make bad decisions, but, um, there, there's an issue there of blind spots when people are doing that, that is causing accidents.
No, it may, it may actually be better if you could add, I mean, you don't have the infrastructure to add two new lanes, but the amount that traffic, and, and, and that, you know, directly funnels to, you know, you have, you're right, to universities, you're going to have Penn Medicine, you're going to have the high school there. It's a lot, so, to add more cars, potentially, uh, when you have, you know, younger drivers, college, maybe, high school, uh, again, it's, having reevaluated the situation, uh, it just doesn't, it doesn't sit well with me, and, and I get, you know, I get Commissioner Larkin's point.
Okay, understood, I, I appreciate your, your comments, because it, it, it helps clarify my questions, thank you.
I would actually argue that we're not adding left turn lanes there, we're recognizing existing left turns lanes there, because people pull around one another. Anybody who's local, when they're turning left, kind of pulls across the median to give the people who want to go straight the room to pull around them, and if they don't do that because they're not local, then the people who want to go straight just drive right up onto the grass.
I, I agree with those comments a hundred percent, it's very accurate.
To say one thing, I mean, there's no, there's no silver bullet. Um, it's, it's bad, traffic is bad, and, and, you know, and you can funnel it from one area to the next, and you're just going to create another problem somewhere else, and, and until this, it's like with the Wawa, until this board and the community can really say it's up to the residents and not up to these institutions and, and commercial entities to keep growing and growing and growing, and we get squeezed out and squeezed out, this is just the start of it, and I think that you're going to be seeing this, it's going to keep, it's just going to keep continuing.
Okay. Just so everyone's clear on what the project is, I have a memo here from, uh, our township engineer, Mr. Norsini, and he bullet points the main highlights. "A dedicated left-hand turn lane for southbound King of Prussia Road to Pine Tree. A dedicated left-hand turn lane for northbound King of Prussia Road onto Eagle. A dedicated right-hand lane for eastbound Eagle Road onto southbound King of Prussia. A left-hand turn lane from northbound King of Prussia Road into Cabrini College, Cabrini, Cabrini University, sorry. Uh, road widening along the front edge of Eastern and Cabrini, as well as a wearing course overlay and new traffic signals." All of those will provide an easier route for the traffic that comes through, and, uh, I would argue, it's, it's absolutely certain to attract more people who will take that route, who today decide to forego it. So, just let me...
Has there been a traffic study on that?
Yes, there has, there's been multiple traffic studies, and, and reasonable people can disagree on it, but I think that when you have an easier cut-through, that you will, you, you will use it, and I think that this will make it an easier cut-through. But reasonable people can disagree, I, I understand. However, what I can assure you, without question, the traffic studies in the area, King of Prussia Road today has almost sixteen thousand, actually, well, not today, as of twenty fifteen, had sixteen thousand trips per day on King of Prussia Road, and going under, going under that bridge, and through, through that area, fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand, twenty fifteen. I think it's more like seventeen thousand today. And what is certain, that Penn has said that their new building and property will increase by seven thousand trips a day, the amount of traffic on King of Prussia Road, twenty-five to thirty percent of which will come from that direction. So, we are looking at a huge increase. If we do nothing, we're, we're going to have a huge increase on the road, and, um, this will make it even more attractive for more people to go onto the road. I would also, uh, thank, uh, Commissioner Larkin for his, uh, recitation and, and fair treatment of this, and a statement about, I think we both agree, I think, Sean, we all agree, that repeatedly bringing things to the board over and over is against the democratic process. It, it, it will only second-guess our decision and make us revisit, um, uh, these decisions, and it's a waste of time, so I, I think we should avoid it, and, and I, I did request that this be avoided in this case. This, as, uh, Commissioner Larkin pointed out, is actually a renewal, uh, a reconsideration of a vote could not be made, um, within the same meeting or within a multi-day meeting, within those same days. This is a renewal, but the principle holds, a renewal should not be entertained, um, you know, at, in, in general, if ever. I would, and I had requested that this not be, in this case. However, um, discretion of the President to bring it back, and, uh, he cites the Charter and, uh, Robert's Rules. What I would also say is that the provision that, Jack, you showed me about, the President's decision, only applies to making a, a tie. So, a, a President can hold, can hold his vote to make it a tie, but not to overturn a tie, under Robert's Rules, but we, we can take, talk about that offline. What, I did have a couple, a few questions on this, um, because I agree with, uh, Commissioner Larkin, I mean, Commissioner Farhi on this. In this case, we're going to increase ta, increase traffic, and I can assure you that the neighbors in the area are generally against this. As a matter of fact, the one neighbor on King of Prussia and Pine Tree on the south-eastern side actually moved, sold the house, and it's now being rented, so they, um, because of traffic issues in general, and this, um, as a part of it. But generally, the neighbors are against this, it's going to increase traffic on King of Prussia, also at that intersection, and by the way, three-quarters of it is, the intersection is a second ward, only the one corner, the, the north, northwest corner is the first ward, uh, although the, the lines go right through there. But this will increase traffic, and it will also increase the consequent, uh, bridge strikes at King of Prussia Road Bridge, and it will make pedestrians less safe in the area, and I recognize pedestrians should not be walking in that intersection. It's terrible to walk your dog or to walk the kids through there, I don't recommend anybody do it. And I talked to the former superintendent, and I said, "Well, what do you, what do we want us to do about people who walk on the streets, where there's no sidewalks, there's no sidewalks in that area?" And Commissioner Superintendent Calarulo said, "We, the township does not recommend that anybody walk on the streets of Radnor, the streets are for, for cars," and I understand that. Nonetheless, people walk on these streets. The people walk across this intersection, they walk down Pine Tree, they take their dogs for walks. This increase in traffic is going to make pedestrians less safe, it's going to increase bridge strikes, it's going to increase traffic, and, um, it's detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of my constituents, so I'm, I'm opposed to this and, and have been. And I've offered the money for this to anybody else's projects. Take the money. I, I, you know, I, it, there's so much more that I would, I would use in light of that. But I do have a couple of questions here. According to this memo, Mr. Norsini, the township exposure is a hundred and eighty-six thousand, one forty, that's our one-third of the amount that won't be covered by the That's our one-third of the amount that won't be covered by the grants that are being sought through this resolution. Is that still the case, the 186,000?
Yes, sir.
So presumably, 186 to us, and then 186 to Cabrini and 186 to Eastern. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I know that they've made that commitment, but do we have a formal agreement about that?
We have a draft agreement pending this signature of this document.
Okay, okay, that's fine. What is the status, you know, one of the areas, one of the issues that, again, with pedestrians further north of this, at King of Pressure Road and Glen Mary, we have many of my constituents and the neighbors, again, walking on the streets on Glen Mary and crossing King of Pressure Road to go to Radnor Elementary School. And we've talked several times about a crosswalk, and we wanted to get a push button to add a light so that people could cross there. But the push button was not part of Penn Dot's approvals. And so what's the status of the crosswalk? Because we need something to get people across.
That has been submitted to Penn Dot, and we're waiting for their reply on our plans. So that is moving forward also.
Okay, because that's hugely important, that King of Pressure Road have some place, and again, because people walk on the streets here. And any update on the traffic adaptive system? Presumably, this would be part of the traffic adaptive. Is that project we're going to pursue, or are we going to let that go now? What's the pleasure of the staff on a traffic adaptive system on all of these intersections and lights?
This intersection was never part of the traffic adaptive.
It was never?
No, it was strictly towards the Critical Corridor, which Penn Dot terms State Route 30 Lancaster Avenue, the Critical Corridor, corridor. That's where the traffic adaptive was always focused. And that's where we got the donation from Villanova.
And what about the donation from Penn? Penn was going to donate a million dollars to this as well.
Penn is actually doing the work. They're actually, we're meeting with them Friday, a field meeting. They are actually installing the traffic adaptive at the X number of signals that was required in the land development plan.
One of the signals that we talked about was along King of Pressure Road at Radnor Chester Road, and I thought also at Mattson Ford, and I thought also down at this intersection.
Commissioner Booker, I'd have to look back. That land development went through. I can get you that information tomorrow on the entire list.
I would be greatly appreciate when you get a chance, an update on what Penn is doing on these traffic systems. But Penn was going to do an application for grants, and if the grants didn't come through, then Penn was going to pay. So they decided not to do that? They decided to just put it in?
They're required to do a grant or no grant. We, this board approved applying for a grant with them. I don't know if they've received that, but they are moving forward.
They're moving forward without it.
We've kind of meandered off.
Glad to hear it. Glad to hear it. All right. Well, I didn't, well, all these issues are relevant because they're all King of Pressure Road, they're pedestrian issues, and this grant request will provide the funding to increase the danger to the constituents on that road and increase traffic. And again, I know you can, believe me or not, but you have to, I'm telling you the truth, that mothers with their children walk on Glen Mary and cross King of Pressure Road to go to the high school. People walk, people walk down Pine Tree Road with their dogs. They go through this intersection at night. People walk on these streets with no sidewalks. And we will have on this road over 20,000 trips a day by the time Penn finishes with this. And it is new lanes. It is new lights. This will no doubt increase traffic on top of what we have. So again, I offer this, the money, that 186,000 to any other project that anybody else wants, I'll split it with you, I'll give it to you. This will only hurt my neighbors, my neighborhood. It will endanger the constituents. It will endanger the neighbors and will, again, decrease, and it's detrimental to health, safety, and general welfare of our constituents. And I wouldn't make this statement if I didn't believe it. I have no qualms with wanting to do the work. What I'm trying to do is to do my best to keep the people in the neighborhoods safe and improve the quality of life as much. There's, in other words, this isn't politics. This isn't me trying to make a political point. I'm not making any political point. It's not going to gain me anything. But I truly believe it's detrimental to approve this and would ask this board not to approve it.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment?
I'll just say that I voted against this two weeks ago. I'm going to vote against it again tonight. Similar comments by Commissioner Booker and Commissioner Farhi. I believe this will increase traffic in the area. It's going to benefit the educational institutions. It's going to benefit Penn Medicine, and it's not going to benefit the residents. So we have a lot of projects that need to be done in the township, sidewalks, road resurfacing. I would rather see the money go to those types of projects.
Any additional Commissioner comment? Hearing none. Any staff comment? Open it up to public comment.
Sarah Pillen, Garrett Avenue, none of you were on the board when Eastern and Cabrini came to ask to build more buildings. Eastern was going to build a, whatever you want to call it, where their library and all their food and everything in the middle of the field. And it was quite a long discussion because there had to be new roads. And one of the conditions that the commissioners asked for was funding for this light. And Cabrini came, and Eastern agreed to it because they know it's a problem with their commuting students. Cabrini came to the board. They wanted to build more dorms. And one of the conditions of building the dorms was that they provide money to fix this corner. What kind of a moral obligation do we have to those schools? And Susan Stern was on the planning board, and she knows they handled it during the time she was on for eight years. So it happened sometime between the end of 17 and sometime in 2010. So I think Cabrini has built more dorms. Eastern has had financial problems and gave up putting this big building in the center of campus. So I know you don't want to answer, and that's fine, but I'm just bringing up the issue of what is the obligation that we have to those two universities who agreed to do it, and they were required to do it in order to get the zoning that they wanted. So I feel like we have an obligation to do this.
Mark Donafrio, Ward Seven. I actually have a question, if there could be a little give and take. Is there an intermediate solution to this? Because it seems that everybody's mentioning that the only solution is a bunch of traffic lights. And the problem is that, is that people are speeding through that area because you could have the infrastructure solution, but you could also have something where you're planting trees close to the sidewalk and it'll actually slow cars down, and it'd be a far less expensive solution. If you look at one of the books by Alan B. Jacobs, Great Streets, they have very atypical solutions that don't necessarily rely on hard infrastructure. So I'm just asking the township to consider other green options that don't require a lot of building. Because I do know in my background in city planning that if you start having all these turning lanes, it will increase traffic, and it won't be a nice area to walk. But if you add a lot of trees, it will make a little bit easier for people to cross. Maybe the township isn't on the hook for building all this infrastructure. It will look better, and maybe in the future, you could kind of look at it. I mean, right now, when everybody's talking about it, it's really hard to visualize. We should actually have a plan up when we're talking about this because we're talking about all these intersections. And I know every, probably most of the people in this audience don't really know what you're talking about unless you actually live in that area. I mean, I kind of vaguely cut through there sometimes, so I'm kind of thinking about it, but I'm not 100% certain. So it'd just be a little bit easier, have some more background on it. And I know there's probably like a planning document, but for this meeting, if we saw some plan above and then we talked about it, we could maybe come up with a better solution. Thank you.
You'll cut through more often when it's set up.
Dan Sherry. So a couple interesting things were stated by Commissioner Larkin in, what would this be, reintroducing this, repeatedly introducing this, bringing it up tonight. We'll go with that. He talked about how, apparently, it's more than one Commissioner that wants this on the agenda. Which Commissioners? Anybody want to take ownership of this? Which Commissioners asked to have it on tonight's agenda? One of the reasons why I ask is, if you flip the page over, you see Commissioner Abel's name in red, as well as Commissioner Mulrooney in red, next to things that they requested. So which were the Commissioners who asked that this be brought back in an immediate successive Board of Commissioner meeting? The silence gets more awkward with the passing of every second. Anybody want to answer that? Nobody wants to answer it. Well, I know three people who didn't want it on it based on their comments, Commissioner Booker, Commissioner Abel, and Commissioner Farhi. So we know it's multiple, and that means that at least two, Mulrooney, Larkin, Barowski, and the guy who always brings up firefighting, which is commendable, very commendable, who wanted it?
Didn't he?
Good, you can talk!
Yeah.
Did you want it on the agenda? Oh, now we zip our lip. Brave.
No, he didn't. I stated, I stated at the beginning.
No, 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 no. This is the problem with this type of nonsense. If you're going to have stuff brought up on successive meetings because it failed, which it did, three to three, that's a failure by a board with a quorum. Come up with a justification more than the guy who just pronounced his last name for Dan Sherry, Dunn showed up tonight. Because that's all I can figure out is the rationale. I didn't hear any new facts or new law or new studies or new opinions. It's just one guy who wasn't here two weeks ago is now here, and so we brought it back. Instead, we get this meandering stuff from Jack Larkin about, oh, I understand bad precedent and all the optics and... That's not ethics. Ethics is doing the right thing when it is something you don't want in terms of the substance. The ethical thing to do is to say, you know what? It's successive meetings. It's really bad that the only reason this got brought back is because now we got seven people up here. Gee, at the time we were voting on this two weeks ago, did we know that there were only six of us up on the dais? I think we did. There was an empty chair. And instead of moving to table it, you went through with the vote, and you failed. Just like it's sort of a failure of decorum to be punching away on your smartphone when someone's speaking, if you're supposed to be presiding over a meeting, Mr. Larkin, like you're doing right now. It's okay. It's okay. Think through your comments. Then speak. It's a bad look, and it's going to be ripe for abuse because here is the abuse. Mr. Farhi, I don't have a lot of opportunities to praise you. I praise Commissioner Abel and Commissioner Booker routinely. You got tonight right. It's not appropriate to be doing this type of a thing. It is bad optics. There's going to be issues that you feel passionately about, but you're not going to waste the public's time by having meeting after meeting after meeting with the same agenda topic, hoping to get a different outcome based on who shows up. That's not a reason to bring something back. And it's insulting to the public's intelligence to bring it back on a successive meeting. It's not that you waited three months, six months, whenever, got new law, got new facts, got a whimpering interruption from Jack Larkin. That's, that is a rationale...
moderate your tone, Mr. Sherry.
...to that be ethical, Mr. Larkin. That is a reason to reevaluate an issue, not just somebody new showed up. When will this end? What confidence does the public have that you actually have decisions made by this board? If Mr. Larkin, and again, it brings to mind the great quote that is attributed to Mark Twain, "The more he protested his virtues, the closer we counted our spoons." Don't come before the public and say, oh, my goodness, you know, really, really, you know, I understand it's bad optics, can't, it's ripe for abuse, but I like it, so I'm going to vote for it. That's not leadership. That is whimpering nonsense.
Hello, I'm Trey Miller. I'm a student at Eastern University, and so I have experienced that weird and not very good intersection on Eagle Road and King of Pressure Road. And I just think that even if there is more traffic with the turn lanes, there will be better, like, it'll be safer for the cars, so there'll be less accidents and less delays for the people who want to get to where they want to go. And that's all I have to say.
Is there any additional public comment?
Hi, my name is Paul Hayes. 214 Midland Avenue. Bringing, I think, something that is, kind of maybe unique to the gathering. I'm most concerned about children. And I think that everybody here is concerned about children. We have, what I think, and I hope, hope that this isn't a problem, is that Penn Medicine is coming in, and they, I know you folks have struggled with this situation, and it has, and I admire you for continuing to move in the jobs that you have. But the thing is, is that in 2017, right in the, right in, between November and December, an ordinance was changed without any, without anybody that was involved, without any participation whatsoever.
Mr. Hayes, I want to interrupt you very briefly, only to suggest, because I've been pretty forceful with others about this same issue, if you have comments specifically regarding this intersection or this grant application.
No, no.
In that case, I'm going to ask, we will have a public participation at the very end of the meeting where you can raise any issue that you would like to.
Well, Commissioner Larkin, I would request that we allow the gentleman to speak. It relates to Penn, which relates directly to this intersection. And, I mean, why not hear him out? I mean, it's easier to hear him out.
Mr. Hayes, I think there's going to be a more appropriate venue for this, and I think there are going to be some other people who are going to speak to this issue with you as well, so you might do a little better.
Okay, well, you know, whatever, whatever you say, you're running, it's your situation to deal with, but just tell me when.
Yeah, we're getting close to the end, the final public participation. I promise I will point right to you.
All right, thank you.
Is there any additional public participation specifically with respect to this issue or this grant application? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. I didn't hear everybody, but I'm betting four to three. Moving on to 4I. Resolution number 2020-30, authorizing the award of the contract for the designs, plans, bid documents, and permitting for erosion sedimentation control for the SR476-SR30 interchange island to Meliora design in the amount of $10,247. Mr. Norsini. Thank you, Commissioner. So this is to do the ENS work, the ENS design for that island. A lot of this price is basically for meetings with Chester County, Delaware County Conservation District, Department of Environmental Protection, to come up with a plan, physical plans, an ENS plan, to stabilize the site, which we could then go to bid with. Now, while this has been going on, we've got the shade tree working on things, we've got some volunteers, so that may be incorporated into this. Whether that may change the bidding versus proposal, we'll have to see. But this is for the immediate design, meeting with the appropriate agencies to get the site stabilized. Is there any Commissioner comment?
I'll speak first of you.
No, no. So we talked about a plan. I haven't been informed of any plan. This, here for the design is costing 10,000. What are we anticipating for a budget for this? Because as everyone knows, there's nothing left in the fund, and this was not discussed as part of this year's budget. So I'm not sure where this money is even coming from.
So I can jump in on that. We have county and, I mean, just general obligations to make sure that the stormwater and erosion...
and erosion and sedimentation that we have doesn't spill into the off-ramp and Lancaster Avenue. You probably recall that in the last big storm, right after the trees were cut down, they got shut down. As a result of the stormwater coming up. So in addition to the fact that we just, as a township, want to keep those lanes open for obvious reasons, there are actually county requirements that we go through with this erosion and sedimentation controls. So we have to make this happen. We don't really have a choice. If we don't do it, then the county comes down on us and makes us. The next step would be to come up with a larger overall plan. And of course, the risk is, if you do the ENS controls now, then some of the work that you're doing for this may end up being stuff that you tear up later on because it conflicts with the plan that you ultimately come up with. Unfortunately, we don't have the time to just say, we'll wait until Shade Tree or a landscape architect or anybody else gets us to design and build it into it. The county will make us do it immediately if we don't do it on our own motion. In terms of, you asked, is there a plan? There is no plan from Shade Tree yet, and so we don't know if ultimately this will get folded into it. Obviously, we'd like to use as much as possible, whatever we get from Eliora, to, to fold into the plan that we get from Shade Tree. As little duplicative work as is possible.
So I guess my question is, is there the, the will of this board that we're going to go out and, that we're going to fund the redesign of this area?
So for, I mean, obviously, I don't know. We haven't voted on it yet. But for ENS, I'll tell you, if we don't vote on this today, the county's just going to come and make us do it tomorrow. For redesigning the area with trees, you may recall at the last meeting, we sent that to Shade Tree to get us a couple of different plan ideas. Not specific plans, but come to us with the concept of, put the wildflowers on the whole thing, it'll cost you $50,000. Reforest the whole thing, it'll cost you $200,000. Put in, I don't know, a roller coaster of some kind, it'll cost you a million dollars. And then we get to pick which we like and put it out to bid. We're not going to do the roller coaster thing. I, I think that we're probably going to be required to do some amount of remediation to the site. PennDOT will eventually require that we do that. They don't have the same time constraints, as I understand it, that the county does for ENS controls, though, so we have a little breathing room there. As for where the money is going to come from? The general fund in the final analysis.
Well, one of the things, so Shade Tree started to take this up last Wednesday night at their meeting. There have been...
Yeah, I watched it.
I'm sorry?
I watched it.
Yeah, so, you know, it's very preliminary. There's a lot of things floating out there in the ether. I mean, over the weekend, we had someone come forward to the Conservancy, offering to put a meadow in and saying that it'll be paid for, that they were willing to pay. There's a lot of people, a lot of ideas, a lot of things happening. You know, Jack is right, we do need to, we do need to stabilize that site. You know, for those of you who were out there, know that the, the sediment and, and all of the branches and things that washed down that hill in that really bad rainstorm completely shut down the exit ramp, and almost the one entire side of Lancaster headed towards Wayne. So we need to do something. It would seem to me that if Meliora is going to do this, and, and Mr. Narsini, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if this is the first step, and we know that this is here, and we know we've got this going on, you know, this would be something we would continue to build upon. One of the things that we suggested to Shade Tree last week is that, you know, this doesn't need to be a one-shot deal. Maybe this is something that we phase in. It's maybe not, you know, it's not something we're all going to pay for all at once, or, you know, who knows how it, it shakes out with, you know, people who are willing to donate services and people who, you know, things that we need to pay for. We had a gentleman come to the meeting who offered to go out to nurseries and get trees that haven't been utilized, that nurseries might want to get rid of as they restock for the new season. So there's a lot of things up in the air, but...
I have a question on this. There was $250,000 that was coming from Penn for the Veterans Park. I believe, I heard from the contractor, that, that was put on hold, and that they're not doing it. I think he got word from Steve McNeilus, no shovels in the ground yet. My question is, that $250,000, can we approach Penn? Ask them to rethink that? And here's another opportunity that's right in your purview in terms of, you know, the new project?
Is that, Mr. Narsini?
And I know that's not ENS. I know that what's on the table is ENS, and I, but, but it's, I mean, all options need to be on the table and quickly on this.
I agree. I mean, that's, you know, I had that conversation with other people today. That's something we should be looking at.
Mr. President, if I could just, if, if that's the sense of the board, if you give us the direction tonight, we will, we will go back to Penn and, and request that.
I would ask that question of them, yeah.
So the other thing we need to consider, though, there were other grants. There was another grant that came along with that, I think from the state, wasn't it? There was $25,000. Yeah, that came along with that. So we just need to make sure that if we decide to shift funds around, that we aren't losing our funds in other places, so...
Well, and, and be prepared for Penn to say no, and then we'll have to reconsider...
Absolutely. But it doesn't hurt to ask at this point. We need, we need all options on the table in terms of this project, and all minds. I'll bring up another one. Matt Marshall stood here on January 27th and, and offered to reach out to Temple and, I think, Penn and, and architecture schools. And frankly, we all kind of fell silent because I think we were still in the shock-and-off phase of this. But, you know, I suggest we go back to Matt Marshall and say, if you've got contacts, let's, all options need to be on the table.
Well, those are all the things that Shade Tree is building into their plan.
Fantastic. And I don't mean to overstep my bounds on that.
And I would also just, I've been considering some funding. We have had an unseasonably warm winter with very little snow. So it occurs to me that the township probably spends a lot more money on snow removal in prior years and probably budgeted a lot more for it. So I was hoping that that might be something we could look at, because I know...
And you just jinxed March. There will be massive stow storms the third work of March, third week of March now.
So I, I think, again, it sets a bad precedent when you have an institution that wants to give money for one thing, and then you say, well, the situation's changed, let's use it for something else. You know, no matter what that circumstance is. This is a bad circumstance. I don't necessarily know that it qualifies an emergency. Would Penn do it? Maybe. Was that the end game all along? I don't know. The 800-pound gorilla in the room is, you know, what happened and why? And maybe I shouldn't ask, but I'm going to, because I think that's what everybody wants to know. You know, and I'll ask, I'll put that out there to, to Mr. Narsini and Mr. White and anybody. You chopped the trees down, and I think maybe you brought that up. You know it's going to cost money to do something with it. What was, what was the thought process behind it? Was, did you know anything about how you're going to rectify that? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, and I don't mean to put you on the spot. Pardon?
I think I'm going to need to clarify.
No, 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 no.
Neither Mr. White nor Mr. Narsini chopped the trees down. No one alleges that they did.
Please don't cut me off either. If I have a question, and I'm representing my constituents, I deserve to answer it. You're not God up there, Jack. And that's, I mean, it, it's a million, you know, like I said, it's the $64,000 question. And again, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, but it just seems that it costs so little to chop that stuff down, and whatever you're going to put in there is, you know, four, five, six times, I don't know what the estimate is. You know, if there's any, any talk, or is this done totally unilaterally?
Yeah, to answer the question, I, those were not conversations that, that I was part of. I don't think anyone else in the administration was part of. I don't know what the plan is. I can confirm that there was nothing included in the budget. So we're, we're having to figure this out as we go forward.
And that's all I wanted to ask.
So we didn't know about the original, I didn't know about the original action taken and don't know of any follow-up action. But I do, to echo Commissioner Larkin's, we do need to stabilize the site. It's, that's a very important thing. I strongly urge you to allow us to move forward in that direction.
I think the other thing, so Shade Tree, one of the things that came up that Matt Golis actually presented, he said, you know, maybe we just let it go, let it come back. He, in his estimation, seems to feel that a lot of the trees will come back. So that could be an option as well. So I think that everybody is getting very kind of hung up on the idea that this is going to cost us thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. I believe, and we even, you know, Jack and I were at the Shade Tree meeting, we directed Shade Tree, we don't have thousands and thousands. And I believe that they are working hard to find creative ways to address the situation, and will be bringing forward, they're certainly not going to bring forward a roller coaster, but, you know, I think they're going to bring forward ways that, I mean, they're taxpayers too, we all are. And, and everybody understands. They asked the question, is there something, a project we could supplant with this project? And we said, no. There aren't any extra projects that we could just scrap and use the money for this. Although, I don't know, maybe Penn wants to. I don't know. So I don't know, yeah.
But I think the biggest issue is that we, we agree that something needs to be done in terms of erosion, because spring rains are going to be upon us before too long. And we don't want, you know, what we saw a few weeks ago, right after this happened, is that Lancaster Avenue turns into a flood down there with muddy water. So I'm in support of the...
We gave this to Shade Tree, let's give them some time to work on the plan.
Lisa, you know, so I mean, we're already looking, voting on spending $10,000. We've already spent 40, and we haven't planted a tree yet. So again, you know, are we headed in the right direction? Sure. I mean, we are. But these things add up before we have one tree in the ground. And, you know, and we'll have maybe two or three studies that we'll pay money for, you know, the bronze plan, the silver plan, the gold plan, the platinum plan, and, you know, we'll pay $10,000 for each of them, and now we're at $60,000 or $100,000. We still don't have a tree. So, but I agree. I mean, nipping this in the bud is the most important thing. It's just an issue of, you know, not only how do you do it, but how do you do it where it looks good and, you know, it's a gateway. It's what we want to pride ourselves on. And I, I guess, to give or ask an institution, a big financial institution, be it, you know, one of the major stakeholders now on, on Route 30, you know, asking them to pay for it, I don't know, I don't want to have to feel that we owe them something, a sign of this. And I don't want to, again, I mean, we are a neighborhood, we are a township, and I just don't want to see us have to, you know, put that little logo, that corporate logo that, hey, and we're, have a reputation of being bought and sold. It just doesn't bode well.
So I, I just have one more comment. And I, I do think this is going to cost several tens of thousands of dollars, if not into six figures. And I fear that it's going to be the reason for another tax increase at the end of the year. Even if it doesn't happen, we're already spending $10,000 of your taxpayer dollars. So I am going to propose an amendment to the resolution, because you, the residents have a right to know as much of the reason behind the, the process that took place that led to the deforestation. So, you know, we're, the solicitor is working on, on a investigation, and I would amend that there be a public version released when that document is completed.
Is the motion to amend, is there a second?
I'll second that, but I reserve my time to comment on the original motion as well.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Nay. Motion fails for lack of a majority. Moving back to the original motion. Rich, you said that you had additional comment.
I did, thank you. I'd like to thank everyone for their comments here, thoughtful comments, and I appreciate commissioners and their sentiments on this. Also, this gentleman back here, I, I'm sorry if I didn't hear, but I appreciate your points, points well taken. And this, and I appreciate this gentleman as well as everyone who comes up to make a statement, and I do want to hear what you have to say. It, it's difficult to make this, the statement, to take a stand, to hear, make your voice heard, and I commend everyone who does that. And, and I appreciate hearing from them, and it really means something, so I, I recommend that. Now, all that said, I, I'm a little shocked because I'm hearing some new things here. Okay? When Penn came to deliver a $250,000 big cardboard check, they came in here, and I think the majority of us, not all of us, didn't know that was going to happen, but they came in with a big check, and I think it's still sitting out there. Maybe it's gone, I don't know. And at the time, I said, we can't just take $250,000, we need to vote on it. A vote needs to occur. This board needs to approve that money coming in and being deposited into the general fund, and then this board needs to approve what it has spent on. And we didn't vote on it. And everyone said, no, it's okay, we'll just take the money, it's fine. Now I'm hearing, we don't have the money. So, so I guess the, my point is, proposal was made, we'll take some of that $250 and spend it on this sediment and erosion control plan. That's the ENS, sediment and erosion control. And we heard it earlier tonight. Take some of that $250 and spend it. And now we hear, oh, well, we got to go back to them and ask. Well, did they, if they deposited $250,000 into the township coffers against my, my good, my, against my judgment, and I said it was illegal, we can't do it, but if it's there, then we can certainly redirect a portion of it. And if it's there, we certainly can direct that it not go to a park, and we can do whatever we want with it. If it's not there, then that's not what my understanding of, of what happened. Because Penn came in with a big check and signed, and it was out there. I, I thought, it's our money. So someone's got to explain to me what's going on, because that's, I'm shocked about it. So where is that $250,000? Why couldn't we use it for this? And of course, we should be able to. And of course, as the gentleman back here says, we ought to have a cost justification for all, every expenditure. Does it make sense? Of course we should. Unfortunately, this is government, and what's good sense is not really part of the equation. It's just, we do things, how, how, we don't run a business, we run a government here. So I, I would say, of course, we should take that money, we should spend it. Sediment and erosion control plan, this is just a plan. This is just a drawing for where we're going to put up silt fence and hay bales and do some regrading to keep the dirt on that hill. That's all it is. $10,000 and change to do that. Once, if, if we approve this, then a contractor has to build it, right? They're going to spend $50,000, we're spending $50,000 or so to build the sediment and erosion control elements that are on the plan. And once that's done, we'll, we'll hear back from, and I'm glad we have Shade Tree and others giving us input, once we decide what we do, we'll probably spend hundreds of thousands more to refurbish it. And that's probably what the numbers are going to be. Oh, Rich, it's not going to be hundreds. Probably will be. Next year, or year after, come back and see if Rich is right. So we have all that ahead of us. But for right now, we do have a problem with sediment, sticks, debris coming off of the hill and blocking the drains and causing flooding on Lancaster Avenue near the interchange. And I, I took pictures of it, and Steve and, and Bill will, will say, yeah, Rich sent us pictures. We, I didn't need to send the pictures, they all knew about it. They were all out there already, working on it, but felt like I needed to send the pictures anyway. So we recognize it's a problem. I would, I would say, let's, if we have to spend the money, which I think we do, that we obviously should not call on the taxpayers to spend this money, we should take it out of that $250. So I call upon our staff to tell us if we can't do that, exactly why, and if we can, why don't you just do that? And I, I would like some response there. And if you don't respond, then Mr. Sherry's going to come up and berate all of us, so. So I think, I think, I think we should talk about, let's, let's talk about, if we can't do that, why we can't, and if we can, let's do it.
I think Mr. White... Go ahead. No, I think Mr. White said if that's a board's direction, then the administration will follow up with Penn Medicine.
Yeah, but why do we have to follow, do we have the $250,000 or not?
We have, yeah, it's sitting in escrow. We deposited in the escrow fund.
Well, Penn's signature isn't required to spend it, then?
Well, did we, we didn't sign, did we sign like a gift agreement or something with them when they...
them when they gave it to us?
No, there's nothing in writing, but they offered it for that, directed to that use. So I think it's fair that the township goes back and has a discussion with Penn Medicine on purchase.
It's fair? Are you afraid of being sued, I guess, huh? Well, this is, this is unforeseen. Can't, can't, can't we make the case that this is part of that overall plan of redevelopment that associated with the gift? So you're saying, no, we can't, that, that money cannot be used for this $10,000? So we have to use our taxpayer money for just the sediment and erosion control plan, let alone the sediment and erosion control elements?
Rich, I'm hearing from the staff that they're going to go have those conversations with Penn with the idea that it would be great if we can renegotiate that gift. And if they can't, we're back to the drawing board. That's what I'm hearing.
All right, I didn't, I didn't hear that.
But beyond that, we don't have a plan yet. And Shade Tree Commission, as Commissioner Barowski pointed out, is coming back to us with a plan. There's, there's steps that need to be taken in terms of making sure that we do this right from the outset. And the first thing, the first step is Shade Tree.
Well, I, I think the first step is, the first step is to stabilize the hill, and I think...
Correct, I'm sorry, the second, the second step.
The engineer will, I think township engineer will agree.
Yes.
I, I don't know why we need to ask permission for this, I really don't. And it's before the board right now to vote on us spending the money. So if we vote, if we vote in affirmative on this, then we will use taxpayer dollars. So I appreciate the comments. If we believe that, I didn't hear that, but I, I believe that if, I mean, if that's what was said, then we should vote no until we hear, until we hear otherwise. Because why would we put the taxpayers on the hook for this if need, if we don't need to?
So the resolution doesn't actually dictate what fund we would use in order to pay for this $10,000. So I understand that you guys can go to Penn as early as tomorrow morning and ask them, and if the answer is yes, then you can use that money, you won't need to spend a cent of taxpayer dollars. If the answer is no, then frankly, I wouldn't approve fighting Penn on this issue. I think we'd probably lose. They gave the gift.
They would, they would fight us. Why, why wouldn't we just use it for that and then have them say, no, that's not what it was for? What are they going to do?
I wouldn't want to beat the fight with them.
Come on.
They would sue us.
I know, I'm willing, you know, to me, that seems to be a very small risk.
Just add one, one final point. So I was at the Parks and Rec meeting, and we're looking at putting a scoreboard at Emelton L. Park. And the big thing that, and I think Sarah, you were there, the big thing that you said is like, you didn't want any, or no one wanted any kind of signage or kind of commercialization, and I just think that that's kind of what we're putting ourselves in for. And you need to keep it a neighborhood, it's a different scale, but it's the same thing. And I just think that you're opening it up to either, depending on how you look at it, the highest bidder or the lowest bidder. And like I said, it's just...
If we decide, if Penn is agreeable, they're amenable to us using some of the money, half the money, all the money for the remediation of that hill. There are certainly ways to give a donor recognition for what they're, you know, for a donation that doesn't involve a sign or, you know, helicopter skywriting or billboard or something like that. There are certainly ways to do that. I don't think that Penn Medicine is in this for any sort of, or they weren't, at least when it came to the park. I wasn't aware that there was going to be any sign there that said Penn Medicine. They were saying, you know, we were renaming the park, and I think they wanted to contribute to that. But, you know, if Penn is willing, there are ways that we can recognize their contribution to this without it being signage or something like that. So I think we should let the staff at least have the conversation. I think it's a point well taken, and see where it goes from there.
Well, I, I agree with Sean. This is, I used to be a big proponent of public, part, public-private partnerships 10, 20 years ago. And today, I am not, because every gift comes with some quid, every quid comes with a pro quo. And if Penn wanted to give that...
That's how fundraising works.
If Penn, if Penn wanted to give that 250, they shouldn't have attached the, the requirement that the name change of the park.
I didn't say, I didn't say that that was a requirement. I don't even know that it was.
Well, that's part of, also part of the problem, because none of us know what it was that they came in here with that $250,000 for. That's the problem. That's what the issue is. Sean's 100% right. And I, I 100% agree, I don't want us taking money unless this board agrees, and we know who's giving the money, and we know whether they have any conflicts, whether they're disclosed, whether they have any interests, what they think that it gets them. We shouldn't be soliciting from our constituents, businesses, hey, give us 50,000, give us 250,000. We shouldn't do that, because no matter what, we are always going to have some built-in, what, what did that get them? And we, even if there's not, nothing, it still has the appearance that it could be. Sean's 100% right. And I would 100% agree with him. But in this case, I lost that argument. We already took the money, the money's in. So what I'm saying now is that the money is the township's to do with as it pleases. Irrespe, and we obviously don't have an agreement, we don't have understanding of what it is, nobody knows. If there is an agreement, we have to use it for the park. There's never been an agreement on paper, I've never seen that. And I disagree that we need to go and ask. If we were going to go and ask, then we should ask the Board of Commissioners to even accept it in the first place.
So I'm hearing from this board a general consensus that we're going to do something about the hill for erosion and sedimentation. It sounds like our fight is over, who's going to pay for it? Rich, it sounds like you want Penn to pay for it out of the 250 that they've already paid us.
Well, it's township money, but yeah.
It sounds like there is a consensus, or at least a majority, that we will ask Penn. Bill, is there any reason why we could not ask Penn, get a no, pay for this out of township funds, bring it back for the next meeting, and then make the decision whether we are going to, contrary to their express instructions, take the money from Penn anyway and pick the fight? I'll tell you that I would not want to do that, but we could procedurally do that, I believe. Would that satisfy everybody?
Well, let me, let me just throw something in there. So, and Maura cut, made a good point, we haven't had overtime for snow, or you saw, and to my knowledge, we haven't had a major sewer break this year, knock on wood. So, could...
Can't use sewer funds.
They can't use sewer, but we do also draw a fair amount from the general fund for, to pay for some of these sewer breaks, am I correct?
Well, the, the adjustments that we've made over the last couple of years in the sewer rent rate has corrected a lot of that. And the borrowing that we did for the sewer projects, taking the pressure off, so we haven't, hopefully, fingers crossed, we don't have to do that this year.
Okay. Could you give us kind of an estimate of where we are? We, you know, ahead, you know, for some of these seasonal things that Maura brought up, are we ahead, are we behind? And look at that number on top of, then maybe using Penn Medicine as well? I just don't want to say, hey, we have 250,000, we messed up, let's go use that money. Let's kind of look at the bigger picture and then kind of scale down from there.
Sure, and I, I don't want whoever writes the laws for superstition to come down hard on me, but we budgeted 150,000, we spent three for salt. So I think someone else already took credit for that, that unwinding, and we're going to get hammered in March. But if this holds true, then yeah, there's some, there's a positive variance there. And that's just the actual expense line for salt, that doesn't include the estimates that we include for overtime and the staff costs.
Could we budget in a sewer break in the general budget or not? Or we'd always just add to that at the end of the year?
We do not budget for a sewer break.
But again, sewer funds can't be used, though. It's a separate fund.
Well, I think what the commissioner is referring to is if there is a sewer fund break, should we count on the general fund having to kick a bunch of money over to sewer to pay for that? And it, it's going to depend on if that happens, how big an expense of the break is.
But we didn't budget that in.
No, we don't budget, we don't set aside money specifically for that contingency. There's, ideally, there'd be cash in the sewer fund to absorb that.
Yeah, is there any additional staff comment? Is there public comment?
Sarah Pilling, I too went to Shade Tree. And what I heard was, PennDOT requires a plan. A piece of paper that shows how it's going to be done. It can't be, oh yes, we'll fix it. And that's why the money needs to be spent to Meliora, to put a proper sock, I heard sock, I don't think it's bales of hay. And I don't see how it's money that can't, it has to be done. Because you're right, the county will come down, and PennDOT will come down. I hope you all understand, we broke it, we've bought it. This is now, in perpetuity, our property to take.
I didn't break it, I didn't buy it.
I will reiterate what I said in the last commissioners' meeting, and I said at the Shade Tree, as a senior taxpayer, no way should taxpayers' money pay for the replacement of this. Now, an odd thing has come up. There is a gentleman who lives in Radnor Township, who is a landscape architect, and guess what landscape architecture firm designed that piece originally, in the 80s? He is looking, the firm is not in existence, but he is researching if the original plan could not be found, which might save a great deal of money and a great deal of time. Although I do agree with Matt Golis, we should not rush into this. Let's see what comes back that's maybe more than Briar's and Poison Ivy. Let's just see what it regenerates. And I will also say again what I said at Shade Tree. We've driven past this since 1980, no one's ever noticed it before until it was denuded. And after it's fixed, we'll pass by at higher speeds than probably want to, and no one will ever notice it after it's done. Thank you.
Commissioner Sherry Wayne, so quite a lot of public comment on this and some revealing information for, for which, again, another compliment to you, Commissioner Farre, for getting out with the question, who is and who is not in the administration involved with those trees coming down? Thank you. That was not known to the public in general, and I suspect would not be known for a longer period of time, but for that question. Now, I'm hearing this idea that we should go to Penn and ask them. As pointed out by Commissioner Booker, you have the money, you have it in escrow. Don't you already know whether there are terms that limit it such that it wouldn't Rich Booker says, no! I believe Rich Booker. Before you go to somebody who has given you, what, almost a quarter million dollars? Shouldn't you already know if that gift or donation has conditions attached? Why does your solicitor not know this and prepare to talk to you about this tonight? If somebody gives you money, and there are conditions and forfeiture clauses and any number of things, you need to know that. It's not acceptable to say, 10 grand, 247, which, Commissioner Barowski, is in actuality thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, to use your term of art, for us to pay. That's not appropriate. Who negotiates that way? I give you money, it's in your escrow account, and now you're going to come to me without doing apparently any due diligence as to whether there are any conditions and say, are there conditions? Who acts like that, other than this board? That's sloppiness. Nobody up here can answer whether or not there are any terms and conditions on that. That would apparently run afoul, where you to take 10 grand, 247 bucks. Interesting amount. I wonder how that would work into, by example, monthly salary? Hmm, interesting. Anyhow, I digress. You don't know that? You're going to have somebody reach out to Penn and find it out after it's been sitting in the escrow account. What other type of business do you conduct this way? Let's reiterate again, the danger of taking money in without making sure that we know who it's from, and the board actually voting, saying, you know what, we're going to take that. Or alternatively, as Rich Booker brings up, and Commissioner Farre brings up, I don't know if that's a good look for this board to accept. This board doesn't have to accept money. It certainly doesn't have to accept money without apparently knowing what the terms and conditions of the money is. What type of precedent is that? And again, something on an agenda tonight, and your solicitor not prepared to discuss the terms and conditions. Last point, again, a compliment to you, Commissioner Farre. You said, I don't know if it's an emergency or not. Well, I'll tell you something, Commissioner Farre, somebody reading this agenda wouldn't know that, because the word emergent isn't there in terms of the agenda item. This public, I suspect, and I'll sort of crib off something you said, firefighter, third ward representative, that this township is likely to be, you're talking again, don't open the door. This township is likely to be very receptive for emergency expenditure of funds, if they think it's for public safety. We understand the importance of acting with expediency because of the dangers that can happen. But when you don't actually put that into an agenda itself and say, hey, this is emergent, we've looked at this, and we have real concerns about traffic safety and the unpredictability of the end of February weather and March weather, then I think you're going to have a receptive township. But when you say, we got over, easy with the whimpering, we have this money that is in our account, presumably drawing interest for us. We don't know if we can use it or not, because we haven't done any research apparently on it, but we're going to reach out to the gifter? Then the public starts to have questions. It seems like you're unnecessarily potentially at least using money for something that you have not specifically identified as emergent. That's not good business. Not good business for a public board, not good business for a private institution. Please, think through your comments before you start speaking them, and please, know again what the conditions are on your own money. Isn't that axiomatic? Thanks.
Mark Donaffrey, Ward 7. I wish we really could caucus on this, because I don't think we have enough information right now. I mean, I'm just going to go through it a little bit. Cowboy action caused us to lose a forest. So the township spent $50,000 plus $60,000 on severance and a man down, you know, in the township, because we don't have now that manager. And now we're going to be spending $10,000 on erosion control, which is an emergency, and it's going to go to a consultant who comes up with a plan, which is going to bring it to a bid to another person who's going to be outsourcing it. Why don't we have someone in the township just do it? Like, couldn't, you know, Mr. Nocini come up with a plan himself? I'm, I'm sure he's as qualified as Meloria Design. It just seems like there is this, this stage of consultants who just award things, and sometimes you just need to have action. And I think one of the problems here is that since it feels so impending that we're going to come up with a design that's locked in because it's an emergency action. So I think we need to kind of separate the problem. Right now, the landscape is denuded, it's going to be flooded. So someone from the township should probably just go in and find a very temporary measure. And then after that, we should have some kind of urban design charrette where people discuss what this landscape wants to be. Because, you know, the people didn't cause this problem, but now we can come up with a solution that's a little bit better. And I, I just see, people don't really know what to do with this landscape. Is it a gateway? Is it going to be like a really nice green space? Is it just going to be a barren land that gradually comes back? I heard some mention about University of Pennsylvania. I do know a bunch of people in landscape architecture department. One of my former professors, Jonathan Fogelson, he teaches at Penn, and he's with Michael Singer Studio, which is an awesome urban design studio. So if you did have some of that money, you could ask that maybe University of Pennsylvania has a student project, some of the students go in to look at a future use for that landscape. But what I'm going back to again is that we have an immediate problem with the landscape flooding and getting further denuded. But we're coming up with a consultant plan to think about it for a while. So maybe we should have a very quick intervention, and then for the long-term plan, we should have more debate, like I say, urban design charrette, where people kind of vision what that landscape needs to be. Because I'm worried that we're going to have a really quick consultant design, it's going to get locked in, and in the future, we're not going to know what to do with the landscape. Because you're like, oh, that consultant decided that. And that's not to insult Meloria Design, because actually, look at their website, it is a very good design firm. It's just, it's only one design firm, and it'd be nice if you had a few consultants compete on different visions for that landscape. And I just feel like we're under pressure to make a quick decision. Cowboy action caused us to get in this problem, and I don't think cowboy action's going to get us out of this problem that quickly. Anyway, that's... Anyway, that's my thought. Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment?
I'm not exactly, I'm sorry. I'm Michael Lake, the fourth. I'm not exactly sure what happened. There's a lot of hearsay and speculation. You can only understand what we read in the press. But from my understanding, two months ago, this wasn't a problem. Now, because of cowboy action, to quote the previous speaker, it is a problem. This is a government self-inflicted problem that we're being asked to pay for. And everyone's focusing on the solution. How can we throw money here? Ten thousand here, fifty thousand there. What's the root cause? How did this happen? I don't really expect to find the answer based on past investigations from this board. But you guys are causing the problem. Not you guys, but the township is causing the problem. And I think it's, you know, after, especially after telling the classical school that they have their sequence completely out of line. The trees were knocked down. There was no plan in place to fix them and now we have an emergency. This is a self-inflicted, a self-inflicted emergency. Thank you.
Hi, Carolyn Swisher, Radnor resident. I do have a question and I know you can answer it right now. Can the Gateway Trust take responsibility for this by getting donations from companies? Since township does not want to get donations from companies, can they still be responsible for this? Because I think that's the big issue that everyone has is that they, whoever funded it, they had funds in place for this and now there's nothing to finish the job. So, can they step in and do that? Also, can the design firm, have they been asked to do pro bono work? Can they offer some free services to help the township? Is there someone else who would be willing to help? I think there is definitely a need to resolve the problem quickly, but I wonder if there's a better way to do it. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes six to one. Moving on to item K. Resolution number 2020-31, authorizing distribution of funds for traffic improvements. Commissioner Mulrooney.
Thank you. This resolution is to, is concerning the county line corridor. There was a study that Gilmore and Associates presented back in March 2019. I was attending public meetings as a neighbor and a citizen before I decided to run for commissioner. And so, it was my understanding then that the Lower Marion Board of Commissioners had agreed with, to split the cost, as they did of the study, to do some improvements along County Line Road. The first, the recommendation for the first phase would be to put in a stoplight at Montrose and County Line. It would allow for safe pedestrian and car crossing. There are a lot of accidents along that way. I lived down the street from there. And Lower Marion did put it in their budget. Radnor Township did not put it in the budget. So, this resolution is to get the, get the ball rolling in the planning and designing phase of this, even though that it was not put on the bond issue or in a funded capital funding list. So, I would like to see us commit to no more than fifty thousand dollars. It's my understanding and perhaps Mr. Norsini can speak to it a little bit better, but that's, we don't think that this is a hundred thousand dollar project. The design and planning estimates I was hearing was about sixty, so that would put us at a thirty thousand dollars. It would allow us, this, the money that Lower Marion has already set aside is there and it's in their budget this year. It would allow us time to do some, seeking for some grants that could offset the larger project for both townships and get the project at least moving in this year as we look to next year's budget to conclude that, you know, find the, find the funds for that capital project. So, I am asking the board to vote yes to get the design and planning started. Thank you.
Commissioner Comment?
So, I think that's good. More of this affects your ward and my ward and we'll just say that. I don't, I want, I don't want to see a set amount. This is a safety issue. There's traffic issues all around. I don't want it to come back if it goes to fifty-five thousand. So, I would just like to see that mixed. And then if we do issue a new bond, again, this is something that I spoke with you and I could talk to Bill or whomever, Steve, that this is, you know, kind of, when it comes to our capital projects, kind of a top priority when it comes to, if we do have a new bond issue or if we retire that or do some kind of swap, that this is one of the first and foremost projects that we do. So, those are my two cents. If, I don't know if it's in there that you said fifty thousand, but I would want that amended to have that removed.
Is that a motion for an amendment? Is there a second?
Yes.
What are you, what are you mending? You're taking out the amount and you just want to make it an open-ended amount?
Yeah, I understood your amendment to be to delete the subclause not to exceed fifty thousand dollars in the now therefore being resolved paragraph.
Correct. I don't want to put a price on, on safety. If it goes to fifty-five thousand, what are we going to do? Not do it? I mean.
I'm going to second it.
Okay, thank you. And the other issue as well is, you know, I had an issue in my ward where we were going to try to do this gateway overlay and it just came across or it was just, I think, Bill, we estimated it for what, one fifty and it's going to be three hundred? I mean, you know, if it makes sense to do it, then we'll do it, but there it doesn't make sense to do it. You put a number on it. That's what we estimated. This is a safety issue. There are accidents there. I mean, sometimes two, three, four times a week. The last one, a car flipped over at six AM. It was on the Lower Marion side. I mean, that was just, wasn't drunk driving, it was just distracted driving. And again, you have small sidewalks, lots of people, lots of kids, lots, lots of pedestrians. And I think that, you know, when it comes to something like this, you need to, you can't put a price of an extra five, it's not going to be a million dollars. We know that. But I don't want to limit it for five or ten thousand dollars. This is a huge, huge, huge public safety issue.
So, there's a motion and a second. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Nay. Motion fails for lack of majority. Is there any additional, Commissioner Comment? Three.
They had, they had three? Who are the three? And you're, and the vote was to make it any amount?
Correct.
It's, it's not any amount, but I don't want to see it get shot down if it goes to fifty-five thousand or sixty-two thousand. It's not going to go, it's probably not going to go that high, but this is a huge, huge safety issue in my ward and our ward.
You got, you got to have a limit on it.
But if it goes to fifty-five, wouldn't you just bring it back? And Lower Marion.
And then it would, then it would slow the process down. This has been slowed down enough. It's been constantly slowed down. We're dealing with another township in another county and we've just had speed bump after speed bump. This has been sitting on the desk for a while and I just think that you need to do it.
I offered the money from that, that other, that intersection project. You could have had.
I'm also going to, I'm sure you'll hear it during staff comment from a source that might be more knowledgeable than I am, but I am not hearing that this is a hundred thousand dollar project. This is a fifty to sixty thousand dollar project, which would leave us at twenty-five to thirty. So, I'm not against removing that language, Sean, but I guess I'm saying to assure others that I don't believe that we're going to get to the fifty and this is going to be something where, you know, we've already got the design firm ready to go. It's not going to increase.
My, my goal is I don't want to see this come back and, you know, and we have to sit on it if it's two weeks, if it comes back in July and we don't have a meeting until August and then it just sits and sits and sits. It's sit, it's sat long enough. I get emails constantly, I mean, constantly, from the people that live in the Montrose apartments and I have two or three people that live on County Line. And every day on Facebook, she takes a picture of an accident and I call her up and, and I say, "Hey, can I put that on my commissioner page?" And she says, "Yes." So, again, I don't think it's a problem. It's not open-ended, but I just don't want to see a couple thousand dollars have this drag on and it's dragged on long enough. So, if the answer's no, the answer's no, but that's how I feel.
Is there any comment on the substantive resolution? No. Is there any staff comment?
So, I do have one comment on, on the resolution. Yeah, well, I thought Rich was, he raised his hand. I thought he was talking.
We're voting on the underlying motion, sorry.
Okay. And Commissioner Mulrooney called me over the weekend and we, we had this discussion and I appreciate the call. I think that's how this board should work and I, you know, I encourage commissioners with items on the agenda to reach out. It was, it was a healthy discussion. I'm going to support the resolution. The one issue I did raise is, again, the process. And this came, a previous board, I remember, three years ago, had the same issue where a commissioner, early in the year, brought forth projects with capital projects and, and getting the board to approve it. Well, another commissioner jumped in and said, "Well, if we're starting to propose projects now, I'm going to have a list of ten so I can get my projects in early." So, I think the process we need to address and, you know, it wasn't included in, not your fault, wasn't included in last year's budget, but we should hold off on projects and allow everybody to have the same opportunity to put forth their projects for their ward. So, we're all on equal standing.
Okay. Now, is there any staff comment?
It just, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but on this project, Lower Marion Township is the one that's going to be leading it. So, it'll be their design firm that is doing this work. Is that correct?
Original plan was for Radnor Township to be the lead, but because there's been a time lag, Lower Marion has offered to hit the ground running also.
Yes. So, with that being the case, they will be the ones responsible for making sure that this keeps pace and that it gets done. So, if there is a change in price, we'll bring it back to the board, but it's not going to delay the project because Lower Marion's going to keep the ball rolling.
Is there any additional staff comment? Is there any public comment?
The resolutions is kind of like a pithy, it says, "Traffic improvements." So, we're talking about County Line Road and around Montrose. Is that correct? Okay, I actually live right by there on Arthur Road. That area's a meat grinder. There's an accident like every other day. And what happens is that, I mean, I can tell you my experience. On Lancaster Avenue, the turn radius is such that people, they don't slow down when there's a stop, you know, light. And what they do is they immediately move into the left-hand lane as they're whipping around. And when you're actually turning onto Arthur Road, you can't see the cars if someone moves in the left-hand lane. And so, all the people in my street pretty much have to stick their necks out just to get into Arthur Road. And I imagine it's the same problem on Montrose. I don't know the specifics about the traffic solutions, but I know one way to solve that is to change the turn radius on Lancaster Avenue because you can go like sixty miles an hour, not sixty miles an hour, but like forty miles an hour on that turn and like hit people. And I know my wife and I, we go to like CVS. The only way to really cross that street is pretty much around Montrose. If you cross anywhere before then, you'll get hit by a car. If you cross anywhere after that, you'll get hit by a car. So, it's a very bad problem and there's actually a children's legal clinic. And one of the lights was actually knocked down so many times that they just stopped rebuilding it. There's like glass on the road a hundred percent of the time. I mean, it really is a disaster right there. I'm just trying to think of some solutions because I don't know the details of the plan. I think I, is this the plan that had a turning lane in the center?
So, the entire County Line Corridor study had many, many options? That being one. But well, what Commissioner Mulrooney has brought forth is specific to constructing a traffic signal solely at Montrose and County Line.
Well, one, a cheaper option, I'm just brainstorming right now, is that could we prevent no left-hand turns and through traffic? And that'll actually stop a lot of people shooting right across County Line Road without like a traffic light. That's really the hiccup. When you're trying to cross, you have people who are on like Montrose and there's another road and they'll stick out a little bit and cars are going so fast down there that they just try to jet right by. And it's pretty much impossible to cross. But I think one of the reasons why there's so many accidents is because people are not, they're not stopping. And I think that if you remove the left-hand turn option, you remove the through option and also I think that if you change the turn radius on County Line Road and Lancaster Avenue, you would reduce the speed of a lot of the incoming traffic because if you're crossing right around CVS and someone's going forty miles an hour, you have about ten seconds or less to react. Now, you could have a traffic light there and I'm not kind of agnostic as to whether that will solve the problem, but I know changing the turn radius on Lancaster Avenue will have an appreciable effect on that. There's my comments for that.
Seeing no additional public comment, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the reports of the standing committees of the board. Do we have any reports? Moving on to new business. Do we have any new business?
I have some new business. So, I think two Thursdays, two Tuesdays ago, there was a great presentation by John Rashudi called Kensington and Crisis, which was about the heroin epidemic in Kensington. I know I saw it and I think Commissioner Borowski was there as well who saw it. And from there, I learned it's, it's all over. It's not, it's not immune to anyone's socio-economic status, but there are things that you can do here. And one of the things that I spoke, spoke to with Lieutenant Pinto, who happened to be there, was getting people, anyone that wants to be trained and it's fairly easy how to use Narcan. There's next to no downside risks. And if you're able to do it and you can keep it in your car, it could wind up saving a life. So, if the board has an appetite to see if we could see about getting some and having maybe our citizens' police, along with our regular police, look at ways to inform the public and how to treat someone that is, has overdose from a, from an opioid. I've got enough chief, if you want to chime in there.
Commissioner, with the tangible manager approval and the, and the direction of the board, we're happy to offer a class here at Radnor Township. The police officers carry Narcan as well as Radnor EMS. So, we are equipped with it. It is able to be purchased at private, I shouldn't say private, but at drugstores and you can also obtain online training as well from the Pennsylvania Attorney General's Office and Delaware County. But I think it would be advisable in today's climate to do such a thing. We will work on it with our CPR Stop the Bleed instructors.
Are you looking for consensus or, go ahead, Maury, sorry.
That's all right. I was just going to say, I carry it. I, you know, I work in the city and kind of in the train station a lot and feels like the right thing to do. So, I did the online training. I thought that was good. I think it would be great to do a live training. So, I would show up to the, to the course if it's offered. Thank you.
Any other comments? Do we have consensus or?
Well, I mean, since you're asking for consensus and perhaps Commissioner Underly can shed some more light on this, but it makes me nervous that we would have people. I would never take Narcan and try to administer it to anyone. I'd never try to do that, class or not, or CPR or defibrillator either. So, I, I think that that's beyond the scope of Commissioner, honestly. So, I'd leave that to the professionals. That's what I prefer to do.
Rich, I think the reason private citizens carry Narcan like I do is that you don't always have time to wait for a professional who has it on them when these happen. The opioid epidemic is hitting our city. It's coming, you know, it's, it's everywhere and if somebody has overdose, you don't have a whole lot of time and you might be the first one spotting it. So, I don't think it should be mandatory for anybody to carry it who's not comfortable, but I sure would love to make it. but I sure would love to make it available to people who are comfortable.
I understand, and I, you know, like you, have spent many, many evenings and even late nights at suburban station and know the population. But again, it's not something that I feel comfortable with and as a township action taking. Administering it to us to give to people on the street.
I'd say that, I second that. It requires some, you know, a basic level of training. But that's all I'm saying. I'm not comfortable without that basic level of training, I wouldn't be.
We offer CPR here, and people take CPR, so if it's something that we can offer as an option for people to self-select, then...
Be basic, yeah, you come here and you get trained, and if you're able to provide it, yeah, no, that's what it's about. And then if the township can work with the county, or the county can work with the provider to get it where it's, you know, affordable, or, you know, I mean, I would be happy to take money out of my pocket to pay for it. I think $75 is a lot. I was fortunate to get a vial when I was there, and I did go online and see how to use it, but I think that it's important and also addresses the greater factor, too, of the epidemic, that it hits home, and it hits here. And it's hit my ward. And I, you know, it's hit my ward very, very, very hardly and very sadly, too.
Is there any additional new business?
Just real quick...
I thought we were trying to get a consensus of the board, so...
Oh, sorry. Do we have a consensus of the board? I thought that we already had one, basically. Damian?
Been asked by a few residents to bring up what Commissioner Borowski mentioned in her recent newsletter. She was kind enough to let me borrow it, but regarding the Delaware County property reassessments, the tentative value notices are to be sent out in the spring. I was just looking on the site, and I think that the Delaware County site says that by mid-February, the property assessments will be sent out. And the purpose of my reminder is just to remind homeowners that they have only 10 days from the date on the notice to schedule the informal review if you disagree with your reassessed value. It's a very short window. You can go to the Delaware County link to get more information. And as I said, the click-through for all of that information is both in my third ward newsletter, as well as Commissioner Borowski's. And Sarah Pilling, you are going to help me with this reminder, so I'll let you just...
There are four townships that are in the last group, and Radnor is one of them. So the assessment is mailed the 16th of March to Radnor Township. So if you get it the 17th, you then have 10 days for a free discussion with someone from Tyler. There is a video on Delaware County's site, and I found it extremely helpful.
Thank you.
Take documents, take photographs, have facts and figures. They're very receptive to listening, and it could lower your reassessment. I certainly know it will with mine.
I've been reminded that new business is not for public comment, so I apologize for calling on you. But thank you for your reminder.
I have one more item of new business. I would request that we, are you done?
I am done.
I request we have Commissioner, I'm sorry, Solicitor Rice, look at the information that Attorney Sherry provided on the official, on the, what do you, how do you say it? The... You have to be quiet, yeah. Here, I'll look it up here.
Mr. Sherry?
Public official immunity. Public official, public official immunity.
High, high public, high public official immunity. In other words, I think, John, you stated that it doesn't apply, that there's an agreement binding otherwise. Can you provide some more definitive clarity on that, especially in writing? Or if not, if you could reiterate what you said before and say, you know, that's it, and this is the advice?
Rich, will you send me the emails and the, I'm sure, fine legal research that was distributed to the board?
Well, I sent you the one, the email...
My understanding is that there were multiple emails about this topic.
I don't think so.
You sent me one case.
Right, that's what I have. That's what I have on it.
All right, well, if there's other emails regarding this topic...
I'll take a look.
And if the board authorizes me to do something on it?
Is there anybody who's interested in this? I'm not seeing a consensus on this request.
Well, it wouldn't take anything from us if John would do it. Well, I mean, he gets paid anyway, though, he's a retainer.
He's not a retainer.
If he's not working on this, he'll work on something else.
But, Rich, you are an attorney as well. You're not the township attorney, but you are an attorney.
No, I don't, I don't do this, this stuff as, you know, he's the professional at this. I could look at it, but I'm sure I would agree that...
Send me your opinion, Rich, on that research that you got.
Okay, all right.
So, is there any additional new business? Hearing none, moving to old business. Commissioner Abel, I understand that you're pulling your two items to bring back for next meeting because you kindly have recognized the hour.
So I'm going to, item A will be for next meeting. Item B will be at a future meeting. I did meet with Radnor Police and the solicitor last week, and they are looking at some of the issues and working through, working through those issues to, so we can bring back a resolution that's, that we can have a discussion about and vote on.
Great, thank you. That brings us to our final public participation. Mr. Hayes, this is you.
You guys have a tough job. Thank you. I'm going to, I have to shorten everything on up because when I, when I see things only by my own physical physiology, I'm going downhill real quick. So I just want to mention something that is very, very important, is that Penn Medicine, Penn Medicine, in the course, I'm going to, in the course of a zoning change that took place without any participation on the part of the general public, Penn Medicine came on through with an ambulatory, ambulatory factor. And I look at it like, at the ambulatory, the ambulatory part of the ordinance. It appeared to me, and a lot of other people, that it was, it's like a, it's like a... There it goes. Trojan horse. Something, everything went, I'm sure that they, there's a good reason for ambulatory service and so forth, but the thing that I'm here for is abortion. They're setting, they're setting the township up, and it was done, and I don't, I don't, I don't know how, I don't want to go into conspiracy theories, but I do know that it looked like they were very professional, looking at all the stuff that we looked through as far as what happened in those times when there, when there was a change of ordinance, without any public participation. There was a very distinct feeling that, that Penn Medicine came in, and they leaned, they leaned on the township. And the township took the bait. And it turned, it turned to a point where, and I don't want, I don't, I don't want to be, first off, I don't want to even be here. But I can tell you, I have to look at it as a businessman for 50 years. I have to look at it objectively. And I just have to, I just stand back from it, and I say, I say $250,000. Thank you. Thank you. It's right in the code book. Influence peddling. All the nice things, hey, how are we going to spend it, and all the rest of it. It's based upon not truth. I mean, how far do we take these things? What, I just want to bring it back to my central point, is that if Penn gets the, gets the okay to do what they want to do as the third-largest abortion provider in Philadelphia, they're going to, they are, they're in a Nirvana situation. Public school, the schools, high school, Villanova University, you've got probably 20,000 kids in one form or another, perfect, perfect for their business. And it's, it's absolutely, we've got, if we don't do something in Radnor Township, whatever happens is going to, this is going to be, could be going on for generations. And if we don't stop, if we don't ask them, you don't bring this in here. If you don't, don't say that we have to, we have to go in another direction on this. If you are planning to do abortions, then you shouldn't take, you just hand the check back and say, "Thank you very much, we want to be friends," because you are in here already.
Mr. Hayes, you have one minute.
Okay, but I say, I say, I want to go further on this, but I got to understand with things, things the way they are right now with the time factor that we have. But I would like the opportunity to come back, to be able to talk a little bit further on it. And, you know, I'm willing to go, I'm willing to go down to Penn myself if it was up to, if it was, if somebody said, "These are the people you go to, you go to a Penn." But with all the talk that I did with the different people on the board, and with the, and with what we found, I can tell you that, I tell you, it requires, it requires a lot of personal contact with Penn to find out exactly what's going, what they plan on doing. So I'll leave it right there, but I'd like the opportunity to be able to come back. I want to end up with...
Here's 500 petitions, 500 petitions that were given in a period of about six weeks. I know I could fill, I know I could fill, fill that, fill that up to at least a couple thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. We have your petitions, your time has elapsed.
I have a request, and I get a copy of those, and I would also request Mr. Hayes to contact me, and I'm happy to go through the issues. I have also requested of our staff to know exactly what Penn will be doing with respect to this issue. Ambulatory care was represented as any hospital procedure of 24 hours or less. So presumably, that, it would cover that. So give me a call, we'll go through it.
All right, Dan Finley, Midland Avenue. I just want to follow up on Paul's comments to ask this specific question. Does this board know what Penn's plans are? Do we know whether or not they have the legal right to do abortions? And are we in a position to ask them to commit to not doing abortions in Radnor Township? Has that issue even come up in the entire time that Penn Medicine was negotiating for this site?
I never, never came up.
We don't really have the ability to have a back-and-forth with you on any of the questions that are being raised. There are seven commissioners, you'd probably get seven different answers, and we obviously can't bind the board on any of these issues individually. If you have questions about the process, I can refer you either to township staff, you can ask the questions offline, or you can go directly to Penn and ask them your questions.
I would also, please give me a call. This is in my ward, I'm very knowledgeable and have been battling Penn directly on this in two separate appeals. So I know all about it, I give you all the data and all the information, but there has been public, there was whatever public wanted to be involved, but there was some public input. But give me a call, presumably it would cover what they, what they, they probably could do that, is what my understanding is.
Who at the township here, on the staff, would be responsible for asking those questions?
Probably our solicitor would be the best person for you to talk to about this.
Okay, thank you.
Call me on, we'll coordinate. We'll get the, we'll get the exact, we'll get it in writing, what it is.
Is there any additional public comment?
I would like to take a few moments to share some information that might be valuable to the public. I'm glad that Mr. Enderly mentioned the Delaware County appeal process. I spoke to Ms. Gallagher, who's our PR person, and I sent her the direct link to the Delaware County appeal process. So if you go to the Radnor website, you should be able to find it directly here, so you don't have to go through the Delaware County, in terms of the 10-day appeal process and how that works. The second thing is, Wednesday night this week, we will have a program at the Radnor Memorial Library with representative from the 2020 census program, and she'll be talking about why the census is important to our township in terms of how it impacts our funding and planning in Radnor, as well as we'll have someone speaking about the political implications in terms of redistricting and drawing ward lines, as well as reapportionment and redistricting in the Commonwealth. On March 2nd, from 9:30 to 12:30, there will also be an opportunity for residents to see the new voting machines that will be used on our primary election on April 28th. That will be held 9:30 to 12:30, again, at the Radnor Memorial Library. If you'd like to learn how to use those machines before that actual voting time, it's a great opportunity to do so. And finally, I was looking online today, and someone had this quote about civility, and I did not bring my booklets today to hand out, but I did like, I would like everyone to reflect on a Winston Churchill quote. And what he said is, "It takes courage to stand and speak. It also takes courage to sit and listen." Thank you.
Dan Sherry, Wayne. So a couple of things. The, I've now had to wait till the end, I guess, to have a full five minutes to talk about the separation agreement entered into but not provided to the public at the last Board of Commissioners meeting, due to the lack of courage shown by the person currently occupying the position of the President of the Board of Commissioners. Didn't want to have that discussion at the beginning of the evening. So I got to talk about it now, after hour, after hour, after hour. My point was, earlier on, about the anti-disparagement clause. And I sent all of you, after you entered into the contract, because I couldn't send it to you beforehand because I didn't have the contract, what the law is, at least in terms of what I found. I'm a catastrophic personal injury lawyer. I don't represent Boards of Commissioners. There is somebody who does, though, that's John Rice. Why does he need my research? He's supposed to know this. He's your solicitor, after all, and he advised you to enter into that separation agreement. And he brought up during his public comment, or rather, staff comment, two weeks ago, about the anti-disparagement clause. Now, what did he say here tonight, when Commissioner Booker asked him, "Hey, do you know about this?" "No, doesn't apply, that has to do with defamation." You all saw the case, had you looked at it that I sent you. That case involved anti-disparagement clauses. And what did the plaintiff try to claim? Breach of contract. What happened to the claim, per the Commonwealth Court? Dismissed on preliminary objections. Why does John Rice need me to bring this to his attention? That's part of research. I want to see it afterwards. After your client has signed the separation agreement. Wow, that's great lawyering. That's great lawyering. And it's even better to castigate somebody in the audience after Jack Larkin has a free-for-all, to use his words, where Sherri Tomola is told while she's at the lectern to address her questions to Nick Canelia? That I'm somehow out of order for that, or getting upset about that. But again, go back and consider what John Rice said tonight. Defamation, not disparagement. Show me defamation that does not include disparagement. All disparagement is, is an unflattering description. Okay? Calling Jack Larkin a nervous... Calling Jack Larkin a nervous wreck, that's disparagement. It's not defamation. Why? Because it's based on my observations of him. So, how can John Rice claim that this immunity that applies to high public officials, that that case law that I sent you involves, by the way, Board of Supervisors, Board of Commissioners? How can you somehow be immune from defamation if you get up here and say, here's what I think about the township manager? Lie, lie, lie with malice. You're immune, but merely disparage him, and you're in breach of contract. Does that make sense to anybody? Of course not. It's the same type of ridiculous advice you got, not this board, but a previous board, that, hey, you can have confidential settlement with the vestiges of Lehman Brothers. Who came up with that opinion? Rice. Who didn't know, after working here for six years, that Radnor Township was within twenty miles of King of Prussia? Rice. Who said, who said that John Rice, who's now going, wow, hey, sit there and get paid and keep your mouth shut, Rice? Who else? Who else up on this board thinks that that makes sense?
Mr. Sherry, please moderate your tone a little bit. You also have one...
Please moderate your ethics, Mr. Larkin.
It sickens me.
It sickens me that you would also, at the end of the meeting, Larkin, knowing what you should know, based on what you claim, your personal private practices of law, that you don't even want to know about the High Public Official Immunity Act and Doctrine, excuse me, and what that encompasses? You don't want to know that, as people up on this board. It's just Commissioner Booker, to know what he's immune from and what he's not. You know what happens if you don't know what you're immune from? You become more susceptible to certain types of influence. Because I got to tell you, it's gotta be scary to think that you can be sued. It really does. It, it's a scary thing to think that I could be sued for breach of contract. But if you were told, as the law seems to indicate, that you are immune, at least when you're up on this dais at a public meeting, that, hey, you can't be held accountable for that, that in fact, the price you pay is political, not civil, that's important.
Thank you, Mr. Sherry. Your time has elapsed.
Yeah, it's sort of a shame that that's how it has...
I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Hi.
We are adjourned.